Good evening and welcome to the allocated local schools Board of Education regular meeting. Today is Thursday, March 13th at 6:30 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And Mr. Kern, please follow along.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Here.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. White?
Mr. White, let me know if you will be able to join us tonight.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Okay, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll do this presentation, then we'll get back in the other room and we'll take on the rest of the business of the agenda, in terms of the provision of the agenda. Right now, if everyone would stand and join me in the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that ends my portion of the presentation. And I'm going to go over to Megan Evers quickly, and Alan Creek-Lantern.
It's okay, I have a lot to say.
Yep.
The first song that we're going to be performing for you is called Twainia. And it is actually African and the word in Twainia is meaning, "We, the children, are taking the stage." I think that just threw us off. Ready, take on, ready, here you go. Oh, is this the song? Sorry, Tina, I'm going to...
Hevukatika, hevukatika, jamani, hevukatika, cha ka cha.
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 Hevukatika, hevukatika, jamani, hevukatika, cha ka cha. Twainia, twainia, wata to twainia, 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 cha ka cha.
Is it okay if we stand here?
Right here.
Oh, how lovely is the evening, is the evening, when the bells are sweetly ringing, sweetly ringing, ding dong, ding dong, ding dong. Oh, how lovely is the evening, is the evening, when the bells are sweetly ringing, sweetly ringing, 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 ding dong, ding dong, ding dong.
How long do you need to shower every meeting? Do you guys come to every meeting?
Sure.
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 They're more anxious. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we come to every meeting?
Can we come to every meeting? We have to practice a lot of music.
Does that mean we can practice every single one?
That would need to be some time.
Are you all going to stay in the wire all the way through high school?
Yes.
Yeah, some fifth graders and some fourth graders. How many fifth graders are staying up on the wire next year? Most of them are. We have a lot of fourth graders. Thank you so much for having me.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to move second.
Right on this down.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to bring the meeting out of recess. That's the right way to phrase it. Have a second, please.
Second.
Second discussion.
Julie and I are going to step all over to the...
Yeah.
All right, scene done. Please follow along.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Here.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
And Mr. White? And Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Okay, so we've got to kind of go back one step and I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, although we do have some amendments, so let's entertain those amendments first.
We do have one. Under item 10, Discussion Items, we are eliminating or removing item C from the agenda.
Okay, any discussion, any issues, discussion on removing item C? So I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? All right, scene done.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. So that passes four to zero. Okay, we already did the presentation, which was actually very good, it was excellent. Remove the Board President's Report. I've got three brief items. One is litigation update, as we've talked about the last two meetings. The Board is, you could argue, embroiled in litigation. The only activity since our last update, there was a motion filed and approved by the court to award the plaintiff a 20-day extension. So we are now kicked out 20 days before we can begin to make progress on bringing that resolution, bringing that issue to resolution. So we've developed a pattern of transparency and kind of consistent communication on that litigation, and we will continue in that effort until that's resolved. Second item is key dates. I can throw a lot of dates out there, so it's keep track at home, if you would, and we'll throw them out there, but then obviously work through Terry Nihaow if you have issues with these dates. We originally had a work session scheduled for Thursday, May 8th, that has now moved to Tuesday, May 6th, to accommodate spring awards, as well as some agenda items. The meeting will include action items, so it will be both a work session and a business session, so that's a change. It will be at Olentangie High School, and it will not be here. So again, May 8th moves to May 6th. Location moves from here to Olentangie High School. In the May 22nd meeting, which was scheduled at Olentangie High School, moves back to here. Our April 10th business meeting is at the Delaware Area Career Center to showcase, or at least get an opportunity to showcase and understand what the Career Center can do. The June 17th Board Retreat will be at Columbus State Community College at Mohler Hall up off of 23. And we're still working through Alice Training. I think there's an email that you received from Superintendent's Office today. We discovered that having it at the retreat was probably not logistically going to work out, so we're probably going to have to have it a separate date. One of the underpinnings of Alice Training is to have it in the environment where the incident may occur, so we need to have it kind of in this room, not up at Columbus State. And then last, in terms of board meeting dates, the July meeting, which was originally scheduled for July 9th, is now moved to July 2nd. Some important spring dates. April 29th at Olentangie High School is the Senior Awards Night. Obviously, great night to get a good appreciation for the quality of the product that comes out. You see a lot of scholarships and awards and recognition. So it's April 29th at Olentangie High School, April 30th is Olentangie Orange High School, and May 7th is Liberty High School. 6:45 is Olentangie, 7 and 7 for the other two. Graduations are Saturday, May 17th. It's Liberty, Orange, and Olentangie, and that's 10, 2, and 6. And again, I encourage all board members to, if they can, attend the awards dinners, awards nights, as well as graduation. So a lot of dates, but try to keep track of those. Now, the last thing is legislative update, and again, Julie was kind enough to provide that. Last meeting, and I ask you to do that again, specific on the calamity bill that appears to have passed.
The calamity bill did pass the House and Senate, and so now it's just waiting for the governor's signature, and he's indicated he will sign it. It was a great example of collaboration because they took some information from the House that they wanted, took other information from the Senate, put it together. It will not affect us, knock on wood, as long as we don't have any more calamity days. What it did was, for those districts who were over the number of calamity days, and each district got five, and then you could apply for three days of blizzard bags, which we did, so you could have a total of eight. And then, by law, we also have to schedule as-needed days in our calendar, and ours are always at the end of the year. So the bill, as it is now, and approved by both the House and Senate, will grant an additional four calamity days, but districts cannot take those until they've used up their as-needed days. So Dublin City Schools tweeted out today, Dublin will be in school on June 2nd, because they didn't have blizzard bags, so they used up their five days and went into a six, so they will be using their as-needed day. That doesn't affect us, and in fact, we still have one blizzard bag that we could use if necessary. So that's the update on calamity days. And then the governor released his mid-biennial review budget. This time, there aren't any funding issues in there, per se. One issue that we'll be hearing more of is, and this is only if it passes, because again, it's, the bill has been introduced in the House, but no action has been taken yet. They're just having hearings, but the bill does indicate that vocational education would be brought down to the seventh grade level, and all districts would be required to offer vocational class at the seventh grade level. There is an opt-out, but districts would have to pass a resolution stating they are not going to be participating. So we'll be watching that, but that's right now, you know, just in the hearing stages. There were some other pieces to the bill that could impact dual enrollment, but nothing is set in stone yet, so keep you posted.
And then, if I could ask you a question?
Yes.
The proposal we talked about last being $1,000 per student, 3% growth rate?
Yes.
We were encouraging people to, to the extent we can, testify what's...
From our school district, Dr. Lucas submitted written testimony, and then Steve Cuckler from our district went and he testified in person, but there has not been an additional hearing on that bill.
It did not get into the governor's...
Well, it didn't even get out of committee, so it's still in committee. It's not in the governor's mid-biennial review proposal, so it's just hanging there in committee. They will be in session through part of April, but they do take a break at Easter time, and then they're off because of the May primaries, and then they may not come back until after the November election. So there's not a lot of time left, unfortunately.
Thank you. Any other questions on any of the updated items?
Thank you.
With that, through the President's Report, turn it over to Dr. Lucas for the Superintendent's Report and Race to the Top update.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone out here. Believe it or not, I'm keeping this short tonight, I promise, because this is...
Not believing it. Oh, sorry. Did I say that out loud?
I heard it. We do have a great report coming up in regard to things taking place in our academic program, and of course, Mr. Kern has a report to do, so I do promise to keep this short and sweet. Start out with the good things, I guess, as they say, a picture's worth a thousand words. There's a choir, that is a volunteer choir, by the way. They do come into your school and practice, as we have many of those throughout the school district. And as you recall, every year, we try to get one of those groups in, and the, I think one of the things that it has accomplished is the fact that this continues to grow at all of our schools. So we're very proud of our Allen Creek Elementary Student Choir, and it continues to grow, and I'm sure next year, we'll be hearing from someone else. Other good things taking place, the Liberty High School DECA donations, as you can see, this is usually, and this is an annual event, by the way, and one that definitely kind of stands out would be that, the Honor Flight Columbus. As you can see, they also donate to the American Heart Association, the Ronald McDonald House, and the Wounded Warrior Project, so we're very proud of the efforts. By the way, when we're speaking DECA, I believe it's next board meeting, we have the DECA Marketing Group from Olentangie High School presenting to us, as you know, this is the time they start going to state national competitions, so we have a very good report coming to you from DECA over at Olentangie. Preschool staffers support Special Olympics with a polar plunge, that was February 15th. I guess you have to raise, want to raise money very, very much in order to make the plunge, and those individuals did just that, $1,700 plus in pledges, so again, another example of what our staff and our students do to give back to our community. Good things, as you know, in our communications department. We've made some changes, and the awards are beginning to come in. Statewide honors at the Ohio School Public Relations Association Spring Conference, Devin Malt, market distinction for his summer 13 and 14 winter, Olentangie, summer and winter district newsletters, and also Michael Strother, started this work at Gehanna, by the way, exemplary social media and website branding campaign, has carried that on here. Let's see, the Twitter accounts since October has grown from 1,900 followers to 3,750, and Facebook has grown from 2,100 to 4,400. So we have doubled, and almost doubled in both of those areas, and of course, that's the reason that we're getting those awards, and these guys are doing a great job, and we appreciate the work that they do. Race to the top, very quickly, I've talked about Think Gate and the fact that, you know, that is a supplemental material for use at the teacher level. It's been presented to administrators, curriculum department, people services. 325 teachers have been taking part in that, and of course, the PD begins being developed for summer and next year through our OPDA, and that's our summer work, our professional development work, which will take place very, very soon. Some updates to kind of add to what Julie's already talked about, that whole dual enrollment piece. As you know, we've talked dual enrollment here for several years. It looks like we're just starting to get it off the ground, you know, we have 14. Next year, we have roughly between 100 and 150 students interested in dual enrollment. Now we have another little hurdle that we must get over, because it looks like the resolution or the proposal is going to be that the funding takes place flowing through the K-12 system to the higher end. I met with the individuals at the Board of Regents this week, me, John Kellogg from Old Westerville, Tom Tucker Worthington, Paul Kraft Delaware. We made our concerns very much known in the fact that in order to grow this program, and as you recall, our goal was 600, if we continue that funding mechanism that the legislation will be acting on soon, there's no language yet, that could cost us up to over $2 million. And obviously, that's, that does not incentivize anyone. That somewhat discourages. So we're talking a lot, we do that on a daily basis. It is an issue, and the good thing that we have in our corner is Dr. David Harrison. He's the president of Columbus State, as you know, and he is assisting us in that, in that regard, because the agreements that have already been made, actually, the first one was probably made 14 years ago with Kenyon College in some areas, they've been working very well. And of course, I do know and understand and appreciate the fact at the state level that we're looking to help those in need, those that don't have the same opportunities as our kids or suburban kids. But in the meantime, we're asking that they at least look at the model that we've already developed. It's working, it continues to work, so we'll continue to have that, that talk. Dr. Harrison encourages us, do not give up, because this is actually, actually part of the compact. If you recall, we passed a resolution several years ago to join that Central Ohio compact, and this whole dual enrollment piece is part of that compact. So we will continue to work, and we will continue to get over the hurdles, as they say. Julie also talked about Representative Brenner's House Bill 228. I'm not sure where it's going either. It's stuck at the House Education Committee. I'm not sure it's going to get another hearing. If it does, we will have additional community members to testify. Basically, what that does, or what we are proposing that that deal does, is fund us at the same level as the chartered non-public systems in Ohio, which is basically $1,089 per student. And again, what does that mean for us with 18,000 students? $18 million, which is, which would be about a $10 million increase in what we're currently receiving. So it's not where we need to be fully funded, but it's much better than what we currently have. So I would encourage many in here, I know we have our regulars here, again, I would encourage a focus on the funding piece, and how can we help Olentangie in regard to that, because this one gives tax release relief for everyone, everyone, whether you have kids in school or whether you do not. So we'll continue to work on that piece. Quickly on the agenda items, believe it or not, it's March, and it's now in March, you act on administrative contract renewals. In April, you act on teacher contract renewals, which, as you know, there will be many, so we're recommending that we approve the contracts presented to you this evening. We're also employing our high school summer academy instructors, and again, that's always dependent upon enrollment levels. dependent upon enrollment levels. That is, we try to make that a self-sufficient program, meaning that number of students determine number of staff hired, so we are asking for some recommendation to hire some of those individuals this evening. And last but not least, if you recall, three years ago, when the wind came through, was it three? I can't check the time anymore, but we now, two years ago, when the wind took the roof off at Olentangie High School, we are now looking to replace that roof, and we are asking for approval to do that in this evening's agenda with a buildup-type waterproof roof with a 30-year warranty in the 15 to 20. Upcoming community presentation, Dr. Mike Thompson, Saving Your Sanity, March 19th, 7 o'clock, Liberty High School, sponsored by the Parent Programs Team. Again, I think we had this on last, last month's agenda or superintendent's report. If you've not heard Dr. Mike, you need to hear Dr. Mike. He, he does a great, great job, and we're very, very happy to have him in Olentangie. With that said and done, I told you it'd be short and sweet. I would entertain any questions that the board may have this time.
Just on the dual enrollment piece?
Yes.
Right now, our parents pay for that college credit, albeit that it's cheaper than what you would pay for if you were enrolled at college. But what would the, now the proposal is they want the school districts to charge-
Yes.
-to pay that. So is it still at the reduced rate, or what?
The minimum rate will be $40, and now, right now, we're at 25. Now, as of September 29th, in, in the budget bill, we, we started picking up the cost of dual enrollment, we, meaning the school district, at $25 per credit hour. The proposal from the chancellor and his group made the minimum cost $40 per credit hour. Again, inexpensive, but still more than what we were, we had already been dealing with Columbus State. The max amount, I believe, is $160 per credit hour. So they're saying somewhere between 40 and 160 is where school districts can land. And again, our, our push in this whole meeting was, look, we're all, we're, we're very much for dual enrollment, flexibility for kids, and, and we keep hearing Board of Regents, higher ed say, everybody has to have skin in the game. Our skin happens to be money. We'd like for their skin to be money also, and I think that's where the whole, the whole piece is, because it's, it's a very, very worthwhile program, and I think once you see, you know, we're 14, say we get 150, and it usually jumps to three, then before you know it, you're at 600. But again, we want to incentivize individuals to do that, but $2 million makes us think differently. So Dr. Harrison shared with me, we will make progress in regard to that, so I will keep you updated on a monthly basis where we are with the dual enrollment piece.
Okay. Any other questions, Dr. Lucas?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next agenda item is the treasures report.
Yes, several things for this evening. First thing, I'm looking at treasure action items to see, can we have approved memorandum agreement for the deposit of public funds with PNC Bank? This is just a normal procedure where it allows us to put money on deposit with PNC. We will be seeing probably the rest of them go through, such as Delaware County Bank, First Merit Bank. Those expire at December 31st of this year, so later on in the year, you'll be seeing a few of those.
So these are existing accounts, not new accounts?
No, no new accounts, just existing accounts, so. Second on the agenda for treasure action items, approved amended appropriations at the fund level. As typical, as we see the appropriation changes, it's for grants is the biggest one, as you see auxiliary services. They got their February, is their third final payment for auxiliary, Dr. Lucas talked about those, some of those, the chartered non-public schools. For example, in our district, Beavillage Academy would be one of them. They got their final allocation from the year from the state. We have to account for it for our folks and spend out accordingly. IDAA, we got an additional bump that we have to recognize, allow us to spend on our special education needs. And third and final for treasure action items is donations to the district. We have 11 different donations, so just pick a few out. Installation of fence at rear baseball field, OIAA, to Heritage, at Heritage Elementary School. Landscape improvements to the baseball field, Olentangie Thunder Parents and sponsors at Indian Springs. And irrigation at Olentangie Orange High School from Olentangie, Orange Athletic Boosters and Orange Softball. There's various other ones throughout 11 of them, like I said, this evening. Again, we're very appreciative of our PTOs and our boosters and our public, very generous to us. And also, want to touch on one last thing. Dr. Lucas mentioned this evening that we will be, for your approval on any superintendent action, I have is the contract for the roof, partial roof replacement at Olentangie High School. We did this through, it's called state term pricing. It's through, which that has already been through the state through that way, it's through, for materials, it's through Garland Roofing. They then bid on our behalf to reliable contractors for the project. What this does is allow us to save on potentially high engineering and architectural costs along with having to, the bidding process, the advertising process. I think Jeff Gordon was telling me that, and I think we're, I didn't write down exactly, about $11.50 per square foot. How school facilities?
There's Jeff.
What was that exact amount? 11?
11.
11, 11, okay. And how school facilities commission guidelines from 2013 for the type of roof that we're putting on is around $12.50, so. He actually called over to some local districts, I believe Dublin was, for a similar project, was over $12 also, so we feel good with the roof that we're going to have over at Olentangie High School.
Great.
Yeah, we did go through the law.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Dave.
Fully vetted.
Yeah, there's a roofing, roofing subcommittee as far as the facilities committee.
Facilities committee now. But when we were up on the roof and we did go on the roof, I have been on the roof, I have photos, it was still the development committee, but that was fully vetted by that group, including going so far as to climb up a ladder, go up on the roof and look at it, so. Great input from the community.
And that's it for my treasures report this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Kern? And I think we were here last, we had talked about having Mr. Kern go through the new financial scorecards that-
Yeah.
Based upon the amount of items on the agenda, we're going to move that discussion to the May, April meeting?
April.
April.
Yes.
One of the questions that I did have on that was if that, those calculations that are going to be on the state report card are going to be replacing the cup report, so I talked to Daria Shams at the Ohio Department of Education, and no, there's still going to be a cup report, so, and it's supposed to come out by the end of the month.
Great. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Kern? All right, thank you. We'll now start with the public participation session number one for general comments.
We do have several this evening. Bob Roman, some first. Bob's actually, since they're both non-agenda items, he's the one talking about OD report card accountability and financial transparency. So I will withdraw-
Name and address for the record, please.
Bob Roman, 1830 West Court.
Thank you.
I will withdraw the question on the building report card accountability until the next community dialogue, so I can get an answer from the board. I don't want to just ask the question and have it go unanswered, so just wait to the next community dialogue to ask who's accountable and stuff. Financial transparency is the main question here, but first, please, let me take a minute to apologize to some, some group. Last fall, I was in here voicing my displeasure about the, uh, sorry, the night where we go to, curriculum night, sorry, curriculum night. I made a false statement about the PTO plan. They were not shaking down parents for money, they were trying to get volunteers for committees for the upcoming year. So I had my facts incorrect on that issue, on that statement, and I apologize. The other comments relating to that night, I stand by, and I would say are strong. So, financial transparency. Who or what exactly is the finance committee? I've submitted a public record request to Mr. Kern, asking who the financial committee is, what their qualifications are. As I've heard Mr. O'Brien say many times, that the financial committee advises the board, they take the recommendations of the finance committee, yet I can't find any meeting minutes, I can't find any meeting times, meeting dates. Can the public come to these meetings? And again, how do we know that the folks that are on that committee are qualified to be on that committee?
Okay, I'll make a clarifying statement. So in the January board meeting, we reaffirmed the membership of the finance and audit committee, so the membership of that committee is part of that document, part of that meeting process. Each member's identified who they are, in terms of their background, that would have been vetted through their selection process. Meetings and meeting dates are posted to the webpage, if you go to the board section of the webpage and click on finance and audit committee, their charter responsibilities and, and activities are all captured in that section of the webpage, including meeting dates.
I can't find any minutes or any discussion points, any analysis that we-
Okay, we can have you work with Michael Strader on how to best use the webpage.
And just for a clarifying comment as well-
For volunteer committee.
We, yeah, we updated the, the objectives of all of our committees, the last three meetings, I believe it was, or two meetings and a work session, so all of the committee objectives have been updated and then approved, all of the committee members, but I know specifically on the finance committee, we have another school board, or another, yeah, another school district treasurer that's on the committee, we have CFO-
Mike's a CFO.
Yeah, a CFO of Crano, Crano?
Uh, I don't remember the name.
Yeah, I think it's Crano.
For most of them.
And a person who works in the finance department at Ohio Health.
Chase.
Yeah, a person from Chase, so they're all, they all have a financial background.
There's CPA, at least one CPA.
And part of those new recommendations is that all of their resumes are kept on file with the district and are renewed annually, so that's all part of the process.
And all of our committee meetings by law are open, all of our board committees are open to the public, and the finance and audit committee will be meeting soon because we've got the Find Your Book Cast coming up.
We haven't set the date yet, we're looking to meet probably mid, mid to late April right now, so working with Mr. Tracy and setting up the date, getting everybody together, so.
The date will be posted to the webpage.
That's released at the newspaper.
Okay, any other for general?
Yes, we do have one, one more. Brad and Tina, apologize if I butchered this.
Right.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yep.
Please.
I'm Brian Kreider, this is my wife Tina Kreider, 7851 Charlene Court, Lewis Side. And I guess it's unfortunate, the real reason why we wanted to come in and say a few words is really for board member, Mr. White. With, with the recent events around pending court case, it just kind of spurred a note with me of negative discord to me, and I really had some questions for him, but I thought I'd come, go ahead and come up and decided to come up and make it a matter of record, because a couple of things that I just see as a trend is, not only with the lawsuit and the negativity I think that it's bringing, and I know everybody has a reason or has that right to do that, I'm not trying to take any of that away, but I'm trying to understand the reasons behind and the purpose, and where are we going with that? Where's he going with that? Also, the continued record of no votes across the board on almost everything that's put in front of the board, to me, is just lack of engagement. And, and then the third part is, and I don't have specifics on all this, and again, this will be for him, and I'll have to come back some other time to ask him directly, but what is really the end game? Because if we have elected officials and your record is starting to show that you're just not really engaged or moving things forward in a positive manner, what's our, what's our, as, as a part of this community and as part of the district, what is it we can do as parents who care about our, our son's education? And that we want this board to be focused on moving us forward. We're a very fast-growing district, we're in very good communities, and when I see people coming and trying to stall or trying to hold back what we can do in the positive working together as a group, it really, it kind of, it rubs me the wrong way, and it's my dollars that are going into this school district. So if I don't have a say after the fact, after somebody gets voted in, then I'm kind of a little miffed about that, so I guess maybe one of the questions for you, what, what is it that we can do? And if you point me to the, the website or tell me where to go, I can go look, but what is it we can do once we get to a point where we're kind of frustrated with maybe a correction? And what can we do as, as citizens within the district?
Yes, for clarifying purposes, just so everybody knows, if you would ever want to talk to us at any time, if you email us, that is public record as well, and if requested, we have to make those available to anyone who requests them. So you can email those questions to, any question that you have at any time, you can email. The board members and our board email addresses are on the website, and, and so that becomes public record too, just like you're speaking here tonight. So, and the other thing that, that you could do is just to become engaged in our board committees. Oh, but Mr. White doesn't sit on any of our board committees, but the rest of us do, and so, you know, you can get, get involved and see what's happening on the facilities committee, the policy committee, the finance committee, the school funding, but we renamed it-
School advocacy committee.
-school advocacy committee, which is a big one, because that's the committee that really advocates on our behalf to our elected officials, and just keep supporting your son in, in the school district.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time. Did you have-
You know, I, I guess, just in terms of this most recent litigation, it was quoted that we've already spent between $10,000 and $15,000, and there would be, in the appeals process, more, not only money but time involved in that. Do, do we have a choice in that? I mean, as a board, as a-
Yeah, I mean, as a clarifying statement, we, as a board, have sort of decided to defend our position, so I think that has been the decision of the board to continue to defend and frankly, support the decision that Judge Kruger's already made.
Okay. So the Judge Kruger ruled, and we thought the case was over.
Right.
And so the, the other body in this is appealing the decision.
Right. So if, through the appeals process, it's overturned, what does that mean to you as the defendants in this?
We would have another decision to make if we want to continue.
Okay.
So it could continue on and on, yes.
And ultimately, is it a fine, is it a, I mean, what, what price is to be paid, I guess?
As a clarifying statement, what's in the complaint is, I believe, a request for $500 is what the damages that he's seeking. And again, don't hold me that, but I've chucked it off the memory what the claim was in the original complaint.
But just to clarify, that would be up to the-
Ultimately, that's up to the judge.
Right.
Whether that gets a word or not.
Okay, good.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others?
Nope, that is it this evening.
Okay. All right, we will now transition to agenda item 10, our first discussion item, college and career readiness update. I believe Mr. Rafe and the entire academic team is here to-
Well, I actually have the entire academic team, but a significant portion of select speakers-
speakers, thank you very much for this opportunity. As you know, we did a four-part series in the beginning of the year, when, right around the time the state report card came out, because the state report card was new and there were a lot of new indicators and new areas and new letter grades compared to designations. We did a series of information sessions for the board to hopefully educate you about what goes into our state report card. Typically, in the spring, we come back and do a kind of a mid-year update on where we are with progress on our continuous improvement plans, progress on our building improvement plans, progress with our intervention staff in all of our specific areas. Typically, Mr. Andres comes back and does a report on people's services and those kind of things. We decided tonight to roll that all kind of together and title it college and career readiness, because that's really our end game for our students. That's become the new mantra in our field, that we want students to be college and career ready. I firmly believe if we're fulfilling our district mission of facilitating maximum learning for every student, then we will, in our end game, have our kids college and career ready. So I'm going to give you a quick overview and then turn it over to the people who actually do all the work, as typical. Thought I'd start you off with the definition of college and career readiness. So what we're trying to get our high school graduates, as people who are having the knowledge and skills needed to succeed in the college and career they're choosing. And we want them to be fully prepared for the next phase of their life, whatever that may be of their choosing. So tonight, you're going to hear from these following individuals in these areas. Mr. Andres is going to give us an overview of what college and career readiness looks like for our students with disabilities. You know, and again, this presentation and the details of this presentation were really spurred by Mr. O'Brien and the questions Mr. O'Brien asked at our report card presentation. You know, we were very proud as a district that we had all As and Bs on all the indicators on the report cards. As we said that night, our goal is to have all As as a district, and for every building, we have all As in every area. So, Mr. O'Brien, you appropriately asked, what are we doing about it? So, all of these presentations are kind of geared towards answering that specific question that you posed to us. Anthony Elkins is going to then come and give us kind of an update on the third grade reading guarantee and the implications of that and how that impacts our overall district performance. Justin Soroka, Principal Cheshire Elementary, is going to give you an overview of what happens at one of our specific buildings regarding school-based intervention plans. And then Vincent Tilio is going to talk about our college and career readiness professional development for our teachers, so that they can then take all that information down to the classroom level and deliver it to our students. And then Jack Fettis is going to finalize it with college remediation rates and where we are in that, in that journey. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Andres to talk about our college and career readiness for students with disabilities. And at any point in time, if you want to ask questions, is there coming on or moving off? If you feel that's easier, good, you know, if you think that's appropriate or if you want to wait until the end, we'll take any of our questions.
The first slide is just kind of an overview of what I'm going to talk about tonight. I had hoped to include information about the special education profile that the Department of Education releases. And there's one specific area that I wanted to talk about and I can't, hasn't been released yet. But that's about transition. And for the 11-12 school year, in our 2013 profile, 100% of our students with IDPs ages 16 and older had measurable post-secondary goals that were based on transition assessments. And if appropriate, we include individuals from other outside agencies to help them with their transitions. So the Delaware County Department of Developmental Disabilities, Opportunities for Ohioans with Disabilities, which used to be the Bureau of Locational Rehabilitation, and other private outside entities to make sure that they had a good transition. I think I'll present that to you sometime next year when we get it in June. I thought it would be a good place to start, to remind everyone that college and career readiness in Olentangie starts at preschool, at age three, the second they turn three and they come to us as a student with a disability. So it doesn't start at middle school or high school, it is absolutely in preschool. We're going to talk about content standards for students with intellectual disabilities, executive skills. I'll define that a little bit more and talk about, when we talk about college and career readiness, it's about the knowledge and the skills. You can have all the knowledge in the world, but if you don't have the skills to be able to apply them, you might not be able to succeed in the college or career of your choice. We're going to talk about web-based curriculum to enhance transition for high school students. And then the Olentangie employment initiative, which is something that we started this year that we're extremely proud of, again, for students with intellectual disabilities. So as an overview, just from the special education side of things, in August of 2012, we had just a few, not quite 1,850 students with disabilities across the district. And we ended the year with over 2,050. There's a drop-off that happens every year at the end of the year because we have a high number of seniors that leave us and a smaller number of kindergarten, first grade, second graders, children tend to be identified in the elementary grade. So there's always a dip at the end, and so that's where you're seeing graduation. The beginning of this school year, we started just a shade under 2,000, and we continue to grow at that rate. So the services that we start off with at the beginning of the year don't necessarily look like at the end because we add a couple hundred students with disabilities every year in terms of identification, students moving in. Actually, I have three meetings next week with families who called me and said, we hear Olentangie provides outstanding service, we hear Olentangie has an A on the report card for students with disabilities, we don't know where we're going to live yet, but we want to come and talk to you about the opportunities that are here. And so it's a great time for us to talk about what people outside of Olentangie are talking about, why they are coming. So that's part of why you see the large numbers.
So, as a percentage of the population, how should we think about a number of about 21, is it about 9%?
We have historically been between 9 and 11% depending on here. So I think 10% is a pretty good overall indicator of where we are. So, in terms of preschool, preschool now has a revised quality rating and improvement system called Step Up to Quality. It's going to recognize programs, and the key word that I want to emphasize here is exceed health and safety standards. It's not good enough to meet anything. When we talk about value-added, exceed is meet it. Well, not good enough to meet, you need to exceed. And so when you look at the new five-star rating, the three up there at the top that are black, learning development, administrative and leadership practices, and staff qualifications, and professional development, those have been in place for some time. But in order to exceed and to get a four or a five in terms of a star rating for our preschools, we need to address the bottom two that are in red. Family and community partnerships. Our preschool has already completed two community forums where they bring in community preschools to talk about the evaluation process and understanding how that works for kids with disabilities, engaging the families and the communities even more than we already have. And the bottom one, additional options for extra points, which I find interesting, you know, the staff and child ratio and group size. So that's something that we need to keep a handle on. We, of course, want to be a five-star system. But when you talk about lowering staff and child ratio and lowering group size, that means hiring more staff. And that'll be a conversation that we continue to have. Are we happy with a three or a four or a five? And in order to get there, what do we need to do to make sure we get to that rating? Content standards and curriculum for students with intellectual disabilities. The Ohio Department of Education released new standards that allow students with disabilities to demonstrate and learn what they know. And an example of what that is, every grade level has content standards already, but what they recognize is some students need modifications. And a modification changes the content and the complexity of the Ohio learning standards that every child is being held responsible for. Basically, you think of it as there's an instructional range, but there's also an independent range and a frustrational range. And we want to make sure that when we have students with intellectual disabilities, that we tailor a curriculum to them so they can be in that instructional range and not in the frustrational range depending on their levels of ability. Oh, I'm sorry. So in terms of the grade bands, you see a grade K2. In three years, kindergarten, first and second grade, we have to do all of those things, but it doesn't tell us when or where. So we need to go back to things we talked about in the district years ago. We need to unpack these standards, we need to figure out what the most important things are, and we need to make sure that children in K2 and grade five, that we review certain concepts over and over and over again, and others we need to hit in one year to make sure they're ready for their assessment, which is the Ohio Alternative Assessment. Our teachers are breaking the content standards down now and revising what they do to make sure that every teacher is providing high-quality, rigorous instruction to every child in our Using unique learning systems, that is a way, an online standards-based curriculum that will be using K12 and transition for every child with an intellectual disability in our district. We haven't dipped down into preschool yet, as you know, they've got the learning standards, they got enough to worry about right now. But in terms of elementary through 12 plus, differentiated into three different levels, it's going to help with data collection, and again, making sure we're providing high-quality, rigorous instruction for every child in our district. The executive skills part, we know that we do a great job in terms of the knowledge for our kids, all kids, and kids with disabilities. But executive skills, they help us regulate our behavior. We're currently using smart but scattered and executive skills in children and adolescents for all of our intervention staff. So there's two different types of executive skills, thinking and behavior. The planning, organization, time management, working memory, and metacognition. I define metacognition because I thought of all the ones on there, that might be the one that you might think, what exactly is that? So do you know anyone who is not as strong in metacognition, which is the ability to stand back and take a bird's eye view of oneself in a situation to self-monitor and self-evaluate? If you have extensive knowledge in an area, but you struggle with that, you're going to struggle in college, you're going to struggle in your career. But same thing with behavioral skills. Response inhibition, emotional control, sustained attention, task initiation, flexibility, goal-directed persistence. About one that you might want a definition for, response inhibition, the capacity to think before you act and to resist the urge to do what to say something. We all know individuals who might have areas of strength and weakness in that area. It's something that we know we need to continue to work on. The knowledge part we've got, we need to continue to hammer away at the skills in order to have children succeed. I think about, when talking executive skills, people go to kids with autism sometimes. And again, there might be a lot of knowledge, but if you don't have the ability to interview well, to follow through on your daily tasks, you're not willing to be successful in your career or your college of choice. It's all about thinking differently and behaving differently. The example I've used is if you come to my house, my garage is beautiful, there's a board everywhere and every tool has its place. But if we would all take a field trip up to my office, you might think this guy has a problem with organization. And the reason is in the workplace, I act differently than I do at home. My response inhibition is different in the workplace. When I walk into the office, I need to check my voicemail and my email, and so I just kind of toss things down. And then you know where it goes from there sometimes. But all about thinking differently and behaving differently in different environments. So we will continue to work on that, not just this year, but I think for many, many years to come. The transition curriculum, envision a pilot program for Ohio State. I wasn't sure if I wanted to talk about this tonight because we're in the process of getting it ready for next year, and I hope we can get it in place with the nice honor center. But this is a program that's been tested across Ohio and Michigan. It's grant-funded. It's web-based for high school students. It's going to teach them information with technology skills in the context of planning their transition into life after high school. It was developed originally for students with disabilities, but they realize in the research it's good for all kids. And it aligns with our current class that we have. So our plan right now is to pilot it next year in one class at Olentangie High School and also at Oasis, to make sure that it is something that we want to continue to do to help that transition to prepare kids for life after high school. And one of the last things that I guess I'm most proud of this year, we have students with disabilities and they can stay in public education through the age of 21 if they need additional services. Many of them have the knowledge and the skills to be ready to move on to life after high school. But unfortunately, we prepare kids to go to college. Colleges prepare kids to get a job. There's a fear that if I have the skills, but I can't find a job, what am I going to do with my child with an intellectual or cognitive disability? And so we need to take it a step further. And so this program is going to help us. It's a collaboration between US, Treka, ByQuest Employment Services, The Village of Powell, and those three community partners in Powell right now, B. Rose, Local Roots, and the Need Me Coffee House. They have provided internships to students, and it's not volunteer opportunities and it's not just a job experience. It's saying, we in our community are willing to take a student with the possible opportunity that they can meet our standards to employ them. So a family and a child at the end of their 18, 19, 20, or 21 can successfully say, I have the knowledge and skills and I have a job, and I'm willing to transition out of Olentangie. Whereas what happens right now is there are many families who are worried about life after high school and the opportunities that might not be there. And so they come back to Olentangie year after year after year because they know what they're going to get here. They're going to continue to get a great education and great experiences. They want to go out in the community, but they don't have the opportunities yet. It's a scary time, probably for any parent whose kid says they're going to go to college. Until they show up on that first day, you're not exactly sure that they're going to get there. So I want to make sure that, we'll hopefully do some more on this, but we do have one student who's 19-years-old, and she has been offered a job, and her plan is to exit high school and to take that job and to go on and hopefully get some money to go to cosmetology school and to ultimately work at one of the places up there. And I hope it works out, it's a great story for her. In terms of a pilot program this year, it's only been a few students, but we hope to grow it and ultimately take that next step to prepare them with the knowledge and skills, but also the job to encourage them to be successful after high school. So again, preschool to age 22, which I guess is just a brief overview. And there's plenty of other people who want to talk, if you have questions, if you have anything to take, otherwise I'll sit down.
I just see names of three businesses up there that I would like to go down and visit this weekend, so.
They have been outstanding.
Great.
Thanks.
Same to Chris.
Well, thank you for giving me an opportunity to kind of come and talk about third grade guarantee tonight. I know this is kind of a hot, but issue right now. You know, we hear a lot of things about retention, it's in the news. So what I'm going to present to you tonight is really the latest and greatest, so to speak, what we know as of right now. To give you a specific example, there was a big piece of this law, we actually got the information on yesterday about 10 o'clock in the morning. So I will include that, but some of these things could change. Obviously, we'll keep you informed as those do change, but what I'll present is, again, what we know. In terms of kind of the way I laid it out, what I'm going to do is start with an overview of the law in general, then turn it over to Mr. Soroka, who's going to talk a little bit about how that might impact his, how it impacts his building, what his building is doing to address the needs of these students. And then I'll come back and finish with some specifics district-wide, what this looks like in terms of numbers and things like that. So to start, I really want to, I guess, emphasize it, you know, when we talk college and career readiness, that is one of the things we're looking at with third grade guarantee, that is the intent. So when we look at our youngest students, our struggling students, what steps are we taking from the time they enter our doors to really prepare them and to serve them and meet their needs? We hear a lot about retention with third grade guarantee, but that's not what the law is just about. It really is about identifying students who are needing, identifying their specific reading deficiencies that they have, and crafting a plan to meet their needs. So that's where it fits in to this entire presentation. So we talked in overview of the law. 2013, 2014, so we're in the school year, this is the first year that retention was required for students not achieving a designated score. That score is a 392 on the Ohio Achievement Assessment. Students took this exam in the fall or October, they will take it again in the spring, and then we will also have an opportunity in July, the week of July 7th, where students who still haven't met that score on the first two opportunities to reach that score of 392. That piece of information I talked about that was released yesterday, our Terra Nova test that our students, our third grade students took on Tuesday, will also be able to use that to determine whether they've met the required score to be promoted to fourth grade or not. So we really are, our students do have four opportunities at minimum to demonstrate proficiency in reading before we have to make that decision about retention. When we talk about students who may be retained because they don't meet the score, there are three exemptions for students written into the law. Students who are yellow, students who are in the country for less than three years, students who have already been retained before third grade, and we've interviewed with those students and provided intensive reading interventions, or students on an IP and it is written into their IP plan that they are... plan that they are exempt because of the reading disability. So there are exemptions for some students. And then the other piece of the law is, there are teacher qualifications in the law for third-grade teachers who are serving students that identify as non-on-track, or serving or struggling students. There are multiple qualifications that teachers could not have, and again, those are changing. By 2017, every teacher licensed to teach can run through third grade, will meet those qualifications.
So we've got 78 out of, how many that didn't get the 392?
What's that?
How many of eligible third graders did not get a 392?
Right now, it's 232, I will get to that, which is roughly 18%, I believe. So when we look at that, and that's the thing, remember that that's the fall test, that test measures the end-of-year expectations. So when we look at that, and even with that, of those students, I believe it's 85, 85 of those students were, at the scoring on the Ohio Achievement Assessment, it goes basic and then limited, 85 of those students were in the limited range, which means that, I'm sorry, limited and basic, so, but those students were basically three questions away from that level. They were either at a 386, 388, or 390, and that's 85 of those students, so. And then when we look at past projections, past performance, you know, when we look at internal projections, we're looking at approximately 13 students as a projection that we use for our annual report and for our benchmarks. We look at last year's 32 students total. We don't know how many of those students would have been exempt because we didn't have to write into the law last year, so we are not planning on, it's all 232 of those students because it is a beginning of your test.
Great, thank you.
So with the law, one of the requirements is a diagnostic test. We have to assess each of our students by September 30th of each year, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade. The assessment we can use is determined by the district. The state has written and provided a diagnostic screener tool that we are allowed to use, or if there's something our district already has, something that's part of our practice, we may choose to use that if it's on the state's approval list. So for the last two years, we've used our DRA, our Developmental Reading Assessment, because that's something that's common practice in our district, all of our elementary teachers give it. So that's what we use to identify because that way we weren't throwing one more assessment at our students, and again, it's something we give. Next year, we are looking at moving to the AIMS Web Assessment that Mr. Andres just presented on previously. It's something that we're going to be giving as part of the universal screener, and it will give us a good amount of data. And then we'll continue to use the DRA to assess our students, to write plans, to inform instruction. But with the DRA, sorry, with the AIMS Web, being implemented in Clintonmont, we felt that was the best assessment to use for this purpose. So what we do with that assessment data then, that we have to collect by September 30th, is report each student as on track or not on track in a rating. We do report that to the state. And then any student who is not on track is placed on a reading-approved monitoring plan, the acronym is AGR. So whenever you hear that term RIM, that's what we're talking about. That is the plan specifically written for the student who is not on track. What that plan looks like really does vary student to student. For some students who are really close on the bubble, it might just be making sure they're in the appropriate reading group in their classroom every day, and then we are progress monitoring them every two weeks or so just to make sure and ensure they're making room. For students who have significantly been high, it might be meeting with a reading specialist three days a week or four days a week. So it really does matter, or depend on what the students, the data comes back, and what the assessment is. A couple of other provisions, a couple of other things we have to consider when looking at the statewide law, what we're required to do is mid-year promotion and retention because, again, the law is intended to get those students at the earliest levels to help them meet, that's the purpose of the RIM. But for those students who have been on a RIM for two years, three years, who still are not at the level they should be, we are required to retain them. One of the things we need to decide is a mid-year promotion policy, because it is possible if those students, you know, perform poorly on the test, they could be formed out of the test and they can perform well on something else. So that's something we're currently working on. I've actually had meetings this week with all the buildings, principals, literacy support teachers, some of the councils were involved to start discussing this and mapping out what exactly we're going to do, what works best for our students. But what we, this mid-year promotion policy applies to students retained because of their RIM guarantee. The state does say it's a district decision outlining those criteria. How are you going to determine if a student is promoted mid-year? And by mid-year, they mean after that summer testing comes back. So we are projected to get summer administration those scores back August, I believe, 16th is the date. So if a student passes the summer, they are considered promoted. If we then promote them that next day based on another assessment or what we decide as a district, that's considered mid-year promotion even if it's in August. That's just the way the state is reporting it. The one thing with the mid-year promotion is we have to ensure, and this is part of the state law, that students be promoted mid-year have closed the gaps. So what that means, if we're promoting a student who's been retained now in the first month of fourth grade, that previous score 392 is not good enough because that was even the third grade score, they now have to be a fourth grade first month level or fourth grade second month level if it's the second. So again, that's why we're looking at identifying what assessment are we going to use, because we want to be sure that these students should be mid-year promoted because they've had the four opportunities, and that we're going to give them the opportunity and we're setting them up to be successful in fourth grade as well. Another piece of the retention provision is to provide instruction at a grade level for students who have been retained in reading. In the eyes of the state of Ohio, these students are third-grade students the following year. Any student who's retained because of their reading score is still taking third-grade assessments the following year, so even if we're instructing them at a fourth grade level, they're taking the third-grade assessments. Again, that's part of the state law, that's not something we have, we will rule on. So again, we define what that criteria is for instructing those retained students at the fourth grade level in math and science and social studies. One of the things we do know and we're going to work through this policy, so for example, when we look at last year's data of our students who did not get at least a 392, there were nine of those 42 students who were proficient in math. So we do have, this will apply to some students, and you know, just like with any student, we differentiate in the classroom, and we provide the best instructions and facilitate that maximum learning for every student. This is a policy we have to set, make sure it's consistent, because we want, from building to building, we want all of our students to have the exact same opportunities. So we're working through that process right now. So when we think about the law, some of the things I just outlined, the assessment, the writing plans, and those kinds of things, part of this does align to what we've done for years in our district. We run our internal projections, and so through those projections, administration of our Developmental Reading Assessment, through the administration of Terra Nova and NU and running some different projections, we've identified students at risk, we've identified students below grade level, and allocated intervention funds to meet the needs of those students. So part of the law, you know, it does align with that. The implementation of the AIMS Web as a universal screener, again, that's going, that aligns with the practice, and it works really well with what we're doing with third-grade guarantee. It'll give us an additional data point to really make sure we're identifying the appropriate kids and we're not letting any students fall through cracks. One piece of the law that has changed for us, and we've seen some change in practice this it is, become much more consistent across the district. We are now identifying the same kids no matter which building you attend, our criteria for making sure you can give help and making sure you're placed on a plan to meet your needs is the same. We had a meeting in August when we used DRA to determine what those levels would be, and then again, next year when we moved to AIMS Web, that will be consistent across all 15 elements, because we don't want students to fall through cracks, and we don't want opportunities depending on which room. So with that being said, kind of outlining how that aligns to our current practice, I'll turn it over to Mr. Soroka to give some more details for his building and the doctors.
Thank you, it's an honor to be here and represent Cheshire Elementary School and the elementary team. Just a funny story before we begin, I was on my way out after dinner, and my daughter, who's in fourth grade at Cheshire, she said, Dad, where are you going, all dressed up? I said, I have a board meeting to go to, and she said, well, what's board meeting? And I said, well, the Board of Education's there and the superintendent, and she stopped me, she goes, Dad, I know the superintendent, he can just say Ray Lucas. At Cheshire Elementary School, one of the things that we have, and what I'm going to share with you this evening, is very standard across all of our elementary buildings here in Olentangie. We have some non-negotiables that teachers are responsible for as, to work at Cheshire and to work at Olentangie. Those non-negotiables include kids-first decision-making, we're here for kids, we're in the business for kids, to make sure we're doing everything we can. We know that college and career readiness begins at the preschool level, like Mr. Andres said, building them up and giving them the school, the tools to be successful. We believe in making data-driven decisions, effective use of instructional time, when we have time with our students, we're utilizing that time to the fullest, even in kindergarten during snack time. Our teachers are reading to students, they're having discussions and conversations. We have effective communication and building that partnership with parents, students, the community, the administration, and the teachers all working together to be very successful. We're very transparent and open. We have effective collaboration, collaboration that's taking place where everybody is working together for kids, going back to kids-first decision-making. What's best for kids, how are we going to help kids, and how are we going to make them successful and achieve their personal best? And we're reflective in our practice. We're always focused on how can we do better? We take our data and we are constantly analyzing how we can be better, again, to help kids to be successful. At the beginning of the year, one of the things that we do is our state report card comes back along with our value-added data, and we work together as a building team to create a continuous improvement plan, looking at the three categories of achievement, growth, and gap closing. As a building, we analyze our data, we synthesize that data, we break off into teams, and then based upon that information that's collected, we bring that back to the building leadership team, which is a team that represents the grade levels, that works directly with me, and when then we fine-tune it even more. After we fine-tune that plan, we then take it back to the building and we look at, how are we going to make these changes so that we can increase in the areas where we didn't do the best? How can we get to all As on that state report card? How can we continue to make kids college and career-ready and being successful as they move forward?
Can I stop you there? So, once you get your state report card data, you go back and you, you look at it and you see where your deficiencies are?
Absolutely.
You come up with a plan to improve on those deficiencies?
Correct.
So here's your accountability.
Correct. And this is posted to our webpage, shared with our PTO at our PTO meetings, and it's very transparent, so the public and the community knows exactly what we're doing to help us to get better.
Thank you.
So again, so each building?
Each building.
On the building website, we have their continuous improvement plan. So Freedom Trail would have one, Cheshire?
Right.
That's correct. As a building principal, I have data meetings with my staff, so every staff member that has data, I sit down with them in a one-on-one conversation and we look at their data, we look at their trends in data over years, we look to see, again, what was different with your instruction, you know, are you making a trend for the positive, are we seeing a downward trend, are we seeing a steady trend? And if so, what are we going to do about it? How are we going to get that trend to move forward? And again, staff members love it, because as you can imagine, the teachers that we have in Olentangie local schools are dedicated to providing the best education for kids. They want to be green with their value-added data, they want to be the best they can be, they love those data conversations, and if they're not green, they want to know, Justin, how do I get there? What do we need to do? I'll do whatever it takes. So having those data meetings is extremely important. I also have mid-year chats with my staff members where we discuss, what have your accomplishments been this year? What have your challenges been? What resources do I need to include in my budget to help support you and support our students? And how can I, as an instructional leader, be a support for them and helping them to become a better teacher and facilitate maximum learning for every student at the helm of the elementary building? We have staff meetings that are geared towards professional development. Every Wednesday, we meet at Cheshire Elementary School in the library. On one Wednesday, we have what is called Focus on Instruction Best Practices, and this is where my building leadership team works with me, we have a book study, and this year we're using classroom instruction that works, that talks about research-based instructional strategies that they can implement into the classroom. It's kind of a make and take. These are the things that work, let's take these, let's implement them, let's seek feedback and see what it's doing for our students. We have cross-grade level best practices collaboration. This is something the teachers approached me about and said, Justin, we have so many phenomenal teachers within our building, we want to collaborate cross-grade level to talk about what's going on in third grade, what's going on in second grade, and having those opportunities. So they come together and they share those best practices in those cross-grade level groups, and then it's something that they can take in their classrooms. So what's working really well for one teacher, someone else, why reinvent the wheel, they can take it and, you know, implement in their own classroom. And then we have whole-school collaboration, and that is a Wednesday in which we all come again to the library and we all work together. You see grade-level teams meeting, you see the building principal, myself, the guidance counselor, special area teachers, everybody in unison is working. Everybody has a focus. It could be looking at curriculum, it could be looking at instructional practices, it could be talking about creating common assessments, it could be talking about kids, how we're going to best support them. It all comes together in that whole-school collaboration, and everybody is there and available to talk and to meet. And then we have a collaboration flex day where we have great days where Dr. Lucas comes out to our building and Mr. Kern, and shares all the great things in the building going on. But this has been so powerful for the staff, and it shows that we are dedicated to professional development, we are dedicated to it being job embedded, and we're dedicated to meeting the needs of our students. Every teacher in our building has a data binder, it's called Collaboration on the Go. Teachers know that they don't go anywhere in the building, any sort of meeting, without their binder. We carry district and building-level data in that binder, we also carry district and building-level data in there from previous years. So just because it's this year, it's not just good enough, we're looking at trends, we're looking at data over time. We have team collaboration notes. Every time teams meet together, they track their collaboration. What was their focus, what were they sharing? And that all gets turned in to me, so the meetings that I'm not there and a part of, I get those collaboration notes so I can ensure that teams are on the right page, and I can go, okay, if I have questions, I can touch base with them. And then we have our staff meetings and whole-school collaboration note section, and then district professional development, that at the elementary level this year was focused on college and career readiness and providing that foundation to our students. This is something that I have created as a building principal since the year we opened at Cheshire, I create trend data. And so every piece of data that I get, I go ahead and I create this data sheet in. The staff loves to look at it, and basically you'll see there is it takes all the grade levels that receive OAA testing results, you have the years, and then you have rankings. Those rankings represent Cheshire, how we basically fell within the school district. And then the color codes, if you see the yellow, that is the third grade, and then as they transpire to fourth grade and the fifth grade, so we're comparing apples to apples and not apples to oranges. So you can see the trend within a grade level. You know, is it that passage rate consistent? Is it not consistent? What does it look like? That our ranking within the district, as you know, many, many competitive schools within the state of Ohio, Olentangie Elementary Schools fall there, so where do we rank within that group? And again, how can we continue to get better? So this is an example of projections met, looking at students who met their projections of where they scored on the OAA. And then this is a passage rate trend example, so as you can see, this kind of shows the district average, and if it is red, it shows that we were below the district average, and then if it turns green, that means we're above the district average. So over time, when I look at Cheshire, you know, we went to having four below average, two below average in the last year. So to me, as a building principal, that's a great trend, as well as looking at passage rates of 100% in fifth grade science and 11, 12, and 100% passage in third grade math last year. Those are great accomplishments. So this is something, as a building principal, I am a data geek, I love data, but we're constantly looking and analyzing the data. One of the most effective things that we have begun in our building and began last year is called Kids on the Bubble, our COB meetings. This is a monthly meeting that occurs in our building, and it involves the building principal, myself, my guidance counselor, the school psychologist, the intervention specialist, the literacy support teacher, and the grade-level teachers, and we come together, and the sole focus of that COB meeting is to talk- And we come together, and the sole focus of that COB meeting is to talk about kids. We talk about kids academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally, and we track their progress over time. And that continues to go and carry on with those students from year to year. So teachers aren't starting over. They have data that talks about those students and how we can continue to meet their needs, communication that we've had with parents, if they've been referred to IAT, which is the Intervention Assistance Team Process, if they've been, you know, referred to having multi-factor evaluation, what are we doing to help those students? So what happens next is some of those kids will be referred to the Intervention Assistance Team Process. Those team members are very similar to the COB meeting. It includes the classroom teacher, the parents, the school psychologist, the guidance counselor, at times the principal, and it starts with data collection. We collect data on students. Any student who comes through the Intervention Assistance Team Process at Cheshire goes through AIMS Web progress monitoring. We collect data points on each of those students, and then we make a determination on whether or not we need to have a formal meeting for those students. If we decide that we need to have a meeting for those students, we have what is called a pre-IAT meeting, which means that the teacher, the guidance counselor, at times the building principal, the school psychologist, we sit down with that team and we talk about that student, and we create interventions that are research-based to put into action for that child. And then we have a meeting with the parent to share the plan. We talk about what we're going to do at school, how the parents can assist at home, as well as what the child can do as well, again, creating that true partnership in the school community. With that, the goals that we write are SMART goals. They're specific, they're measurable, they're attainable, realistic, and timely, and they're used to progress monitor students, so that we know if that student is making progress and we're closing that gap. And then we have a follow-up meeting with parents six to eight weeks after that time, and we look at that data. If we see that that student is closing the gap and making progress, we continue to keep those interventions in place. If we see that that student may be stalling, we decide, okay, let's try these interventions, or we may refer them for a multi-factor evaluation and look down the route of special At Cheshire Elementary School, we have two community-based programs that have really helped us to be successful and helped our students to receive more support. Cheshire Reads and Cheshire Counts. Basically, we look at our students through our COB process, through diagnostic testing, the DRA's, and previous OAA testing data, and we determine which students, again, could benefit from that extra support. We have parent volunteers that are provided training by our certified staff, and they're matched with individual students or small groups of students to support them, and they come in weekly with students for one-on-one and small-group support, and they work directly with the classroom teacher to help fill in those learning gaps. And so it's been a great program. Last year, we were lucky enough to have the Olentangie High School Junior varsity basketball team that participated, and when you see those students, you know, eyes light up because their high school mentors come in to help them with math and reading, it's really a special thing. So those are the things that we're doing at Cheshire Elementary School to help support students, provide them the appropriate interventions for being successful and helping them to be college and career-ready, to be successful in life. Any questions?
Now, how will you use that information going forward for the new teacher evaluations?
The new, with the data?
Yeah.
Well, the data is part of their evaluations currently, so it's 50% observation from the building principal or their evaluator, and then 50% is made up of data, which depending upon your grade level or your area, the data changes. So in those teachers with third, fourth, and fifth grade data, it's a combination of student learning objectives, SLOs, as well as their value-added or OAA data.
But with all of this preparation that you've done, that shouldn't be a surprise to them?
Absolutely, absolutely. As a matter of fact, at building level, we want to be the best that we can be so that we can be a predictor of what our success is going to look like. We know what our report card's going to look like in the end. And I think over and over and over analyzing that data is getting us closer and closer to that point.
Yeah, because the data, Justin refers to in his collection process, is individual student data that comes out, that their progress monitoring, as the year goes on, it could be classroom-level data that teacher gains from their forms of assessments that they conduct in their classroom. And you know, the point he just made is really important. So I, you know, when I go out and meet with the building principals on the mid-year checks, on Jack and I, and their continuous improvement plans and the progress they're making on those continuous improvement plans, documentation that they have to show that they're making that progress, we want to get to the point where we have enough data points and predictors where we know, because that's the time, if the data's not looking good at that time, then we need to make mid-year adjustments. But I want them to feel like they are at the point when it comes to end of April and the kids are sitting down for the OAA test, that we've done everything possible, that they are prepared, that we've had all these proper interventions in place. Now, the aggregate data that comes back for a teacher that's relative to their individual evaluation is a composite compilation of all of the data performance that the kids showed, their students on their individual tests. But we've been collecting a mountain and analyzing a mountain of data on our student performance for years and years and years. The points that Anthony and Justin both made about third-grade reading guarantee, which is really important to note, that all that stuff, all that the law did was formalize for every other district in Ohio, what we've been doing for years. And you know, everything we have is out there, and it's all public consumption too, so.
So what's the forum for kind of principal-to-principal to share best practices? Because you, you know, I see a lot of good things being done at Cheshire. How does that get shared, kind of building-to-building, so that what you learn at Cheshire could be adopted in other places, vice versa?
Well, that's a great question. We are lucky enough to have a very strong elementary team. We have elementary team meetings, basically bi-weekly where we come together. We have great leadership with Mark, where we are providing the opportunities to share best practices and take those things and take them back to the building. And then principal-to-principal, you know, we have phone calls every day where we're working and talking with colleagues across the district on things that come up and how we can, you know, better solve a problem by putting multiple heads together than, you know, just going out on your own.
Okay.
And we do, I think we do, in general, the principals do a great job of being collaborative professionals who rely on each other and their own expertise. For as much as we want to try to be very similar, we do have different, you know, the composition of our buildings, because the people in them, the teachers in them, their relative strengths could be entirely different. And you could do something, you know, I would never say that education isn't exact science, and that what works in one building may not necessarily work in another building in two completely different approaches, but they do a great job of sharing and working together. I would call them a little bit competitive, which is a great thing. I think our buildings are competitive amongst each other. You saw that ranking system that they kind of do.
He wants to know.
You know, in general, we want to see, you know, I guarantee that that's a conversation that I have with them. And they enjoy that competition.
Well, you have a regularly scheduled meeting with the principals, don't you, Dr. Lucas? And so those are those opportunities for that sharing of information.
Well, we have all admin, what, six times a year? Five or six times?
And the great thing too is, you know, Mr. Rafe talks about the competitiveness of the elementary team. Our competitiveness is positive because we want to do what's best to get everybody to the highest level possible, to make Olentangie continue to be one of the best.
Great, thanks. Look, Cheshire got applause. Yay, Cheshire. Cheshire got applause, I don't know, I think they win. Number one.
So I think as we get into now, speaking of some specifics of what this looks like in terms of third-grade guarantee within our district, that's why we did want to highlight, you know, have Justin talk about, what are some things that building are doing? You know, as we mentioned, it was hit on, yeah, do things look the same building-to-building? No, but there are some non-negotiables. You know, the plans, the buildings, right? The Intervention Assistance Teams, those are things we do in every building to make sure we meet our students. So when we look at some of these numbers, we are hitting those things that we have and doing it. So in terms of third-grade guarantee, again, our impact in Olentangie. If you remember earlier, I referred to that screener, that diagnostic assessment we have to give by September 30th, and we gave that this year with the DRA. We've identified 422 students as not on track in reading, grades kindergarten, grades one, two, and three. So what we did with those students, again, according to the law, is place each of those students on a reading improvement monitoring plan. What that plan looked like, as I referenced earlier, really depends on the student need. The biggest difference between kindergarten, first, and second-grade students and the third-grade students on those plans is the teacher qualification requirement. We are required by law to make sure the primary person, the classroom teacher that's responsible for that plan, that's going to meet that need, the needs of that student, is a qualified teacher. There are qualifications such as having a master's degree in reading or going through a certain certification program, but we do make sure the third-grade students, the teachers of the third-grade students have those qualifications.
And as a clarification, for every one of those 422 students, our administrators are required to have three meetings with the student and the family, beginning of the year, mid-year end, and ending of year progress meeting for all 422 of those students.
So, and these are the numbers I referenced earlier, when you asked. So when we look at third-grade guarantee, we look at the Ohio Achievement Assessment, I was off by 3%, so I apologize for that, but it was close. 232 out of 1536, those are the numbers of students who did not meet that score of 392, so 15.1% of our students. Of those students, 147 were basic, so that's why I was even referencing, you know, we had 85 students who were limited, which is basically three questions away, or if it's a, you know, four-point question, one question away from that score. And again, that's end-of-year skill in October. So there are, you know, those are kids that, of all 232 of those kids, you know, the building's had discussions on, that does raise a fight, hey, we need to monitor these kids, we need to watch them. One of the things we expect as a district, and we did, is we are still meeting with those kids, we are writing plans, we are intervening with those students. State law does not require that. It only requires that those students identified as not on track by September 30th. We did the right thing by the student, because we don't want any student retained. We want to make sure our students are on reading level.
So when you saw the 15%, what was kind of reaction? Was that what we expected? Is that about right? A little high? What was the reaction?
And what we do, and we look at past data and what our trend is, and that is close to what our trend has been for the last several years. So it is close to what we expected. And when we look at projections, and again, that's one of the things we pull in as well, is we take those projections that are based on their second-grade standardized test data and really look at those. And so, as I referenced earlier, based on our projections, we're looking at 13 kids. We look at, you know, past years, we were 42 kids last year. So we kind of look at all those numbers in whole to see, are there, are we on downward trends and upward trend? So this has been consistent. Do we want improvement? Absolutely. And so that's one of the things too, we've had lots of conversations, and we're starting to work with teachers in earlier grades, and what does reading instruction look like? Because we don't want this to be just a third-grade problem. You know, if we are intervening and we are providing the appropriate instruction in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, and we are writing those plans effectively immediately to those kids, we will see those numbers change. So again, I talked about the end-of-year measure, you know, end-of-year skills on the October test. As I mentioned earlier, this test will also be administered in April, the Ohio Achievement Assessment, and then that week of July 7th, we don't have a testing study as a district. That is the statewide testing window, the state has released recently. So we will give those students a third opportunity to meet that score of 392. One of the things we're looking at, and this is something that is best practice, and so we started the planning process, is offering summer intervention to those students leading up to that summer test date. So what we're looking at doing right now, you have any student who, by the time we get those TERRANOVA scores back late April, early May, any student either on the TERRANOVA or the fall administration of the OAA has not met the required CUSCOR, we are going to offer summer intervention to those students. We're going to have a summer reading camp to start. Again, even those 85 students I referenced earlier, that we're confident, based on the data we have, they're going to be there, we don't want to leave them out of this summer opportunity, because the reality is, they could have a really bad night the night before. You know, something happening at home, coming to school sick that day, and then it turns out, oh, we get the spring scores back, oh, sorry, you didn't meet it, even though we thought you... We don't want to go down that road. So any student, based on those two test dates or those two test scores, we're going to offer a summer intervention opportunity to. So what we're looking at is kind of tiering it in two different three-week chunks. The first three weeks, again, will be any of those students, based on the two test scores. During that third week of the, or the third week of the first section, we will get these spring scores back. At that point, we will inform parents and students, congratulations, you did get the required score on the spring administration. Bring any student now, after those three test administrations, who are still on that 392, bring them back for another three weeks with real intensive, small-group intervention. Again, we don't have numbers because we don't know how many students are going to enroll. We don't know what the TERRANOVA CUSCOR is, so we're just planning, making assumptions it might be all 232 kids. We know it's not going to be, but we don't want to underplan. So again, looking at bringing those, that next-tier students back for another three weeks and finishing that summer program with that last week, or, I'm sorry, first week of July, which is our last week of the summer program, when we will give the summer test.
Is there an expectation statewide on what percentage of kids are going to struggle with this? I mentioned before, I volunteer in Columbus Public, and the numbers are 20% are passing. And so the concern of, what are we going to do with these kids, I think is a larger global problem, and I just don't know if they have numbers around what they think. I look at Olentangie, and even one is not acceptable to me, but to look at a 20% passage rate in areas of Columbus Public-
And the state's not releasing any data, it's our expectations number of kids they expect to be there. The third-grade guarantee does apply to, we expect every third-grade student to be reaching that level of 392. But then again, we also know, looking at state report cards, where it was 75%, now that measures moving to 80. If 80% of your kids pass the test, that's good enough to give your grade or mark, you know, so to speak, for your state rating to give you an A. But again, we're pointing every student with a third-grade guarantee, so in terms of hard numbers or how many they expect or planned on, we don't have any data or information like that.
And how does a third-grade test affect those students who are determined to be dyslexic? Do they have to take the test? Because you said that there are some exemptions.
Right.
Is that one of the exemptions, or?
Every student is expected to take the test unless there is a significant cognitive disability. And when Mr. Andres talked about the extended standards earlier, it's a student who those standards apply to, they're taking a different assessment. Otherwise, all students do take the test, but what that assessment looks like for them depends on their IEP in terms of the accommodations they may get. So it may be a small-group setting, maybe extended time. You know, there are lots of accommodations that students get to meet their IEP and to meet the students' needs. So same content.
And then for those students who aren't passing the test right now, maybe they haven't been determined to be dyslexic. Are we, no matter how much reading you would do with them, it wouldn't work, because it's not the right kind of intervention that they need. So how are we then working with all of those students to determine, hey, maybe we missed them before, they might be dyslexic?
And that's one of the areas too, that we're moving towards with the implementation of the AIMS Web next year, and using that as a screener. And then we look at that to narrow kids down, then administering the CTOP for phonological awareness. So we are moving in that direction, but right now, it's through that IET process that every building has, where we gather that student data and we continue to track and progress monitor. And if we're not seeing the progress, and we've changed the intervention, you know, we give six weeks of intervention, it's not working, we try something else, and then we try again, and we're still not seeing improvement, moving forward with the MFD process. And so then in terms of those students, it is in state law that there are students can have that exemption in their IEP, and so what state law specifies, it's for any student who the curriculum is significantly different than another third-grader, or the accommodations they need on their test to be successful are really outside of what we can allow. If they need 12 hours or something, you know, there's some different accommodations, but the law does allow for that. But in terms of identifying it, really it's working through that IET process the last several years, and what's in that IEP, and then next year, moving forward with AIMS Web and using that as a screener.
I think the message that's coming across loud and clear is, we're not waiting for the results of a test to tell us where our kids are at. I feel like there's a pretty good finger on the pulse of what's happening with each student on an individual basis, rather than we take a test, or even we try something for six weeks and then try something else. It's a, it seems like a very involved process, very individualized process, that involves- involves parents, teachers, and administrators. So that's coming across loud and clear, if that's what you're hoping to demonstrate here. That's impressive. Thank you.
So moving forward, another piece of law I wanted to talk about with that testing, what we're looking at doing next year. And again, I keep referring back to Mr. Rogers, but it ties into what he's presented to you in terms of AMES Web. We are looking to unify those two things, because it makes sense. So what we're looking at next year is we're using the AMES Web as our reading universal screening tool to determine what kids are on track, not on track. In addition, and that's one piece I haven't touched on yet, we are required to also administer a writing diagnostic to our first, second, and third grade students, and a math diagnostic test to our first and second grade students. This year, because of our start of school and when things were released, we gave that at the beginning of the year. The state has two versions, they have what's called a screener, and then before, we gave the screener. One of the things that we are looking at for next year is, do we want to give that at the beginning of the year next year, or move it to the end? We don't have that determined yet. We have some teachers throughout the district who are going to give it at the end of this year as a voluntary basis, provide a feedback and determine, is this useful for me? What is going to help me with my instruction or the beginning of the year to inform this year? Or if I give it at the end, pass that on to the next year's teacher? So again, that's still up in the air, but we're considering it. It's best to meet the needs of our kids. But it is a state requirement that I did want to make you aware of, so when we hear testing, you know, we're giving kids this test, and this test, and this test in elementary school, some of that is required by the state, but the guarantee on the walls. The other thing is, when we look at third grade guarantee, we look at K3 literacy. One of the things we want to make you aware of is, K3 literacy will begin appearing on Ohio's report card system. Next year, we will receive data on that. The state has not released any technical documents in terms of how that's going to be calculated with specifics, but what we do know is, with the K3 literacy measure, it is measured as a reduction in the number of students not on track. So for example, if in kindergarten, you have 30 students not on track, the next year, first grade of those same 30, now you have 20 students on track, you've reduced it by 10 out of 30, so you've reduced by 33%. The other piece we do know that state has released is, that measure is going to be based on statewide averages. So, you know, if 33% of students being removed from a plan is the statewide average, that's a C. If the statewide average is, you know, zero or a negative number, the grade's going to be higher. Again, I'd love to give you some projections, but we don't know.
So you don't know.
We don't know the exact calculations, but we do know it's going to be on there, so we wanted to at least get that out there.
And isn't the cut score for the third grade reading guarantee, doesn't that, isn't that going to go up each year, too? Like this year, it's 392.
That was the intent originally, and they only released it for this year. But right now, it's looking like 392 for next year. We've not received any information about that moving or changing. One of the things we do know as well is, even though we're moving to next generation assessments, next year's a state, we are still going to use the Ohio Achievement Assessment in third grade reading, because of this measure, because we want to give students multiple opportunities. And with the park assessment, there wasn't going to be a fall test. So we do know that's staying around for that purpose at least. Take it from there, we're still learning and things are changing, but. So with this measure, though, and part of it is that fall test that will be around next year, what we know is, it's measuring again from that September 30th kindergarten to September 31st, same from first to second, second to third. And then the next piece is then, it will measure third grade, the screener from September 30th, to performance on the statewide test at the end of the year. So we're also going to include third grade reading improvement on this literacy, K3 literacy measure. The other thing we do know is, for students that maybe did not achieve a proficient score on the Ohio Achievement Assessment, but were never placed on a reading improvement monitoring plan, or were on one and taken off, we, for lack of a better term, lose points for that. So that's one of the things we started a conversation about. We really want to make sure we're identifying the right kids. And then if we're not sure, we're going to give maybe another assessment on top of the AMES Web, and we're going to make sure that these kids, if we're even, if it's questionable, we want to make sure we're serving them, writing the plan, and meeting the needs of every student. And again, this does align what we've done in terms of differentiating in classrooms, just really formalizing the process. And the last thing we do know about the report card indicator is, any district or building that has fewer five, fewer than 5% of kindergarten students not on track will not receive a grade. Again, if you're looking at 95% of your students are already on track, and then how do you reduce that? So the state said 5% is kind of the cut for receiving a running grade. So right now, if we were to get a grade next year as a district, the projections would receive the grade, because we didn't have 5% of kindergartners identified last year. We do have some buildings that do have more than 5% or some fewer. So that is third grade guarantee, and as we know it today in a nutshell. Any specific questions or more questions about that? Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Vince DiTillio to talk about professional development.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. My name is Vince DiTillio, and I'm the supervisor of secondary curriculum. And tonight, I just want to give you a really brief, brief overview of professional development for the 2013-14 school year. And Anthony and Justin did a great job of really detailing the challenges that students are facing in the third grade reading guarantee. I guess the other side of that is, there's many other challenges. And with those challenges to students, and the increased demands on them come increased demands on teachers. And I think we often forget that part of, you know, our responsibility as a curriculum department, that we take a lot of pride in, is meeting those needs that staff have in planning high-quality professional development. And like I said, right now, we have no shortage of things to be working on, just because things are continually changing, continually being thrown at us. So when we worked a plan for professional development for the year, we have three PD days. And those days are structured in a way where in the mornings, buildings get together as a group to sort of do some new learning, some activities that we plan, present some information. And then we also plan in collaboration time in the afternoon, so they can take those back to their departments, work on implementation, reflect, really get down to the teaching part of it. And when we're looking at what to do in those three days, there's really two factors we look at. One is, what's coming down the pipe? You know, what do we know about the future of education? What new legislation, new things do we need to be working on? And then also, we assess the needs of the staff. And this year, we began the planning process by doing a need survey with the staff, kind of asking them, what, where are your areas of weakness? What are you worried about? What do you need help with? We combined that with what we know in our world, in the curriculum department, and came up with a plan. And this year, our focus was on a deeper implementation of Ohio's new learning standards, and especially the college and career-ready outcomes that are embedded within those standards. So if you look at, and I apologize, I guess the formatting with slides got a little off, but we break this down into three, three pieces for staff. One is enduring understanding. That's something we want everyone to leave at the end of the year, understanding, an essential question that we want to sort of drive people's thinking throughout the year, and then just some learning objectives that we hope staff master throughout the year. This is the same thing we do for students in the classroom, we treat the staff the exact same way. Really, when they left, we wanted them to recognize that there is a major shift in Ohio's new learning standards, and that's the inclusion of college and career readiness and literacy into all curriculum, all subject areas, all instruction, all assessment. And that was something we wanted everyone to leave with. And as you look down through the sort of objectives of the day, I'll talk about those a little later, but this was a visual we created, sort of of the plan, and this was, we called it our anchor chart for the year. And a lot of our planning really started around, what does a college and career-ready student look like in Olentangian? You know, we asked teachers a lot of questions, what do you think college and career readiness is? And a lot of great discussions, and there was a lot of debate about what that actually means. So on day one, what we really did was, we really compared what people thought to what the standards set in. And I think that was an eye-opening experience for some people, because it is a rigorous outcome. And if you're familiar with the standards at all, I think the best analogy is sort of, the finish line has changed in education, and there's two ways it's changed. One is that it's the same for everyone, and if you're a teacher, it doesn't matter if you're K, you know, if you're kindergarten, if you're third, it doesn't matter what you teach, the finish line is the same, college and career readiness. The other thing that's changed is the finish line is much further away. The rigor has been bumped up. And that's not it, though. There's, there's new obstacles in front of that finish line. So as teachers, there's a lot of things, a lot of weight on teachers, of things that need to be improved, refined in the classroom, we're going to get students to these outcomes. So day one was focused on, what are the outcomes, the seven outcomes? I'll share those with you in a second. Day two, we took the focus kind of off the student, or off the student, and we talked about teaching. So we asked teachers, if you know, if you agree that you want to get kids to this outcome, what do you need to do on a day-to-day basis to get kids there? And yeah, are we doing a lot of those things? For sure. But many of them need to be refined, repeated, reflected upon, and we need to build some coherence in instruction year to year. So day two was really focused on, what do I need to do? And then day three, we continued with this visual, how am I going to know they're on track? And we know that if we change the outcome, and we change instruction, we have to change assessment. We can't use the same old assessments to assess these things. We need to embed college and career readiness into the assessment. And to tell you the truth, that's the toughest part. And really, that's, I think that's a part that we're going to continue to focus in on next year. But we like this visual, it's simplified, the learning for the year, and it brought some coherence to each day. Principals will bring this chart back out and kind of start the discussion there. The outcomes, if you're not familiar with these, these are the seven college and career-ready outcomes. Think of them like characteristics or dispositions of a college and career-ready student. They're independent. Everyone agrees on that. They have strong content knowledge. They respond to varying demands. They comprehend as well as critique. They value evidence. This is one that buildings have really ran with this year. A lot of buildings, especially at the high school and secondary level, have done a lot of work with using evidence to construct arguments. And this is something that's spanning mathematics classes, language arts classes, the science classes. It's something that really brings, these things bring people together. That's the other nice thing. We can have a conversation about these seven with a kindergarten teacher or an AP French teacher. It's, it's great that we really can talk the same language, have that same finish line. It does a lot for, I think it does a lot for the level of conversation we can have with our staff. Obviously, the sixth one, technology and digital media strategically and capably, that's, that's one that a lot of people are still really working on. And then understanding multiple perspectives and cultures. So that's the finish line, if you go with that analogy. The shifts, these are the instructional changes that need to happen in order to get there. And the, these six are the six we focused in on this year. The first three are more leaning towards literacy, the last three are leaning a little bit towards math, but we think they all fit all instruction. So the first one is really looking at content-rich nonfiction. Students reading nonfiction to build their, their knowledge, focusing on that on a daily basis. The second, reading and writing and speaking grounded in evidence. You hear that word a lot in Ohio's new learning standards. It's all about evidence. We have to back what we do with evidence. Three, students reading complex texts and it's academic language. All students need to be reading complex texts. Not just when they're totally ready, but we need to push students. We need to learn to teach students to struggle through a tough text, give them the strategies, the coaching on a daily basis, so that they, when they leave 12th grade, they know how to tackle a tough tax in college. And I think we can all relate to that, because not all of us had those skills when we entered college. Four is really important, focus. These standards are not like the old standards. The old standards had a much different focus than the new standards have, and we need to know what those are. Like if valuing evidence is something where they focus, we need to focus on that. It sounds simple, but it's, it's a huge one. Five is really important, too, coherence. We have to build coherence across grade levels. We have to link topics year to year. If I'm teaching seventh grade social studies, I need to know just as much or more about sixth grade social studies and sixth grade literacy standards, and maybe even more about eighth grade. So we're doing a lot, getting teachers, not just in the PD days, but getting teachers 612 together, trying to get teachers K12 together in the end to have these discussions. Six, rigor. We've heard a lot about that word. I like the way this statement puts it, that conceptual understanding, procedural skill, fluency, and application are all hit with equal intensity. And that is a shift, that we are spending as much time on conceptual understanding as we are on fluency, and that, we're working on that as a staff. After we implement all this, and I mean, we can't go into all the details of all the, all of those days and the activities we plan, one of the things we're very concerned about is making sure that we know if we were successful, if we know staff were progressing. Just like with our students, we hear Justin talk, you know, about how do we know, how do we know they're progressing? We have to collect data from our staff. And one of the questions we asked in the pre-assessment was to react to this statement, college and career readiness is embedded in every subject of Ohio's new learning standards. And on that pre-assessment, we had 35% of the staff who still weren't sure or disagreed that that was true. Now, we knew it was true. I mean, we knew it was true, because we spend a lot of time in there. And in the post-assessment, we got that down to 12%. Now, I'm not satisfied with that, but I think we had a lot of growth, and it also tells us that this is not a one-year plan. This is big, big changes for some folks. So this idea of just realizing that this is, this really is the finish line. If I'm teaching seventh grade social studies, I have to believe my job is to get kids college and career-ready, not just to know about ancient Greece and ancient Rome. And I taught that subject, so I can, you know, I understand where we're coming from. It's a different mindset. So we're, we're making progress, but we have really grown. The other thing we collected data on was just, on each topic, on each, like, learning objective, how well do we meet people's needs? So at the beginning of the year, 28% of people told us, we need help with these college and career-ready outcomes. In the end, 80% of them responded that they had learned why it was important, how, how to implement, or they had already changed things in their teaching. From a professional development standpoint, that's pretty good. Yes, we would love to see that number higher. You know, some people are way above this also. You know, they knew some of these things before. So there was another option that I kind of knew some of these things that was in the choices, too. Same thing with instructional shifts. 23% said, we need to, we need to know how to teach to the rigor of these standards. We're not quite sure what I need to do on a daily basis to get there. In the end, we had 83% of people in response to instructional shifts respond that they had learned why it was important, how to implement, or already changed their teaching. We were happy with that number. And really, similar numbers, again, with the characteristics of quality assessment. I will say that this one is really tough, and this one takes a lot of, a lot of practice. It takes a lot of implementation and then evaluating your assessments, and this is something that we know we're going to need to work on next year. So one of the things we did also with the post-assessment was, we kind of embedded the pre-assessment for next year, so we got a lot of good data to kind of drive us as we really start that process very soon. Overall, the year, we were very happy with the response we got from staff. I think we planned engaging, Justin mentioned, job-embedded professional development. It wasn't just sit and get. We really did focus on implement this, come back the next time and talk about it. And in the end, I think we achieved our goals of getting people to a deeper implementation of the standards, and also recognizing that college and career readiness is a shared vision and a shared role for Olentangian. So, thank you for your time.
I want to interject, Mr. Ryan, you asked a great question before about standardizing the intervention processes that Mr. Soroka presented on. This is another thing we've tried to standardize with our principals, when Jack and his team teach the principals how to deliver these lessons to their teachers, and then they, they modify and they meet the needs of their, their staffs, again, honoring the individual differences and, and specific targets of the buildings. But Jack and his team do a great job of, of teaching the principals how to deliver this message, so we get a standardized message about what our expectations are as a district in terms of professional development, to ensure that all the kids are getting that similar experience.
I just have one question. How has it been moving from professional development, or moving to professional development days instead of those two-hour increments that we used to?
Well, since I'm new to the districts, I don't know any better.
It's been awesome.
But I would say, planning for an entire day is much easier, and anytime you can, you can get the new learning and then get them into your team and talk about, what does this look like in my classroom? We call them learning labs, that's what we call them in the afternoon. We got tons of great feedback about that. And then the other thing we suggested with principals was, bring everyone back together for a half hour at the end of the day, let's share out best practices. I think that's a really good format. I mean, three's never enough, but they do a great job of supporting that in their day-to-day PD. I mean, Justin's plan right there, those Wednesday meetings, those align directly with what we're doing. That's what we hope to see. And then he hopes, I'm sure, that his team is doing the same thing when they're talking. So it has layers to it.
And from a building principal perspective and communicating with my teachers, they love the full days as opposed to the two-hour delays. With the two-hour delays, they were always, you know, thinking about the copies they needed to make, the phone calls, the emails they needed returned, so they were kind of scattered. Now they feel very focused that they have a day to really dig in and work collaboratively to learn new information and put it into practice.
All right, the last speaker. For this presentation, warm up, Mr. Curran. And for the record, I don't know when Dr. Lucas's next evaluation is, but he did tell me to try and keep this around 30 minutes, so I'll take the heat for 77 minutes. So college remediation rates. What's this all about? We care about how prepared our students are when they leave our schools, whether it's traditional graduation, through the Christmas employment program that we talked about, or anything else. One thing we've talked about at board meetings over the course of this year is that finally, the Board of Regents has standardized remediation rate data. So as the Board of Regents reports remediation rate data, all colleges are finally using the same measures. Unfortunately, this didn't happen until December 31st of 2012. And the most recent data is still for the class of 2012, which would have graduated prior to this decision and entered college prior to this decision. So any of the data we have still has not yet been standardized. And after we start at the bottom of this slide and look at our remediation rates historically, you can see there really is no trend pattern amongst our students attending Ohio Public Colleges. And that all depends on, of course, in each individual class is full of individual students who have strengths and weaknesses. But the colleges that they choose to attend, as they reported differently, didn't really lend to any trend data. However, with the most recent data, it is what it is, and we will report it and own it. 510 of our students in the class of 2012 attended an Ohio Public College. 12% needed remediation in reading. 14% needed remediation in math. When we track students at all colleges from that same class, we can track, instead of 510, we can track 788 students. And that's through the National Student Clearinghouse, which goes beyond the scope of the Ohio Board of Regents, which is only interested in Ohio Public Colleges. National Student Clearinghouse tracks private colleges in Ohio and outside of Ohio and public colleges outside of Ohio. We've signed up with this service for the past three years, so we have data for the class of 2012. And of those graduates, 80% needed remediation in reading and 90% in math. Again, we want that number to be zero. College and career readiness means zero percent, and that's what we want to work for.
But going forward, even though the Ohio Board of Regents has established set remediation standards based on the ACT, your private colleges and your out-of-state have not.
Correct.
So it's still not, I mean, the remediate, well, let's just say you're not going to get into Princeton if you have to take remediated, you know, math at a remediated level.
But at least on this previous slide with the Ohio Board of Regents data, we can at least count on.
And the remediation is, or maybe ask a question slightly. How many of those students required it in both versus one and not the other? Do we know that?
Memory in reading and math. I don't have that for the National Student Clearinghouse data, but the Board of Regents data in reading and math, I want to say it was around.
They do report it, and I can't remember what.
Yeah, it's in the annual report, I'm sorry. I can look it up, but I don't have it immediately available. Another thing that we want to make note of in terms of remediation is the state changed graduation requirements and the Board of, and all in Tangi also changed graduation requirements, beginning with this year's graduating class that require that students graduate with four credits in math. Previously, the requirement had been three. So when we look historically, probably 85% of our students would graduate with four credits in math. This will be the first class that theoretically 100% of students should be graduating with four credits in math, which should help our math remediation rates. Lastly, the state report card we love to talk about. There is, in addition to the literacy component that Anthony talked about, there's also going to be a component this year called Prepared for Success. And we'll report all of this data. In blue, I've provided for you the most recent data in each of these areas that we have available, just to give you an idea. These are not projections at all in terms of what we're going to look like on this grade card. And a letter grade won't appear until 2015, but this year we will begin to report this data. College admission test participation. So, you know, the ACT is a popular data. Percent receiving non-remediation scores. Dual enrollment credits. Industry credentials earned oftentimes through the Career Center. Also honors diplomas awarded. Advanced placement participation, advanced placement percentages scoring three or higher. And international baccalaureate, which is not a program that we offer in the one tangy, we talked about that before. But all of these data points will be reported on the school report card in future years. And this beginning in 2015 will also somehow be calculated into one letter grade that of course we will aim for an A in the next year.
I know it was a lot, and I appreciate your time and attention. And we had, you know, we had two opportunities with the academic report card and then this opportunity by Mr. O'Brien's question about intervention. And I do think it's important. It isn't an effort to give ourselves a self-congratulatory pat on the back or, but it is an opportunity to honor the hard work that our teachers and our principals do every day. Jack and his team do every day to meet our district mission. And in any of our efforts, we're not going to be happy until we have the highest scores possible. And we're not going to be fully satisfied until there continues improving. I encourage anybody to ask their, that asks their classroom-level teachers if they have an issue at a classroom level, talk to their classroom-level teacher about what can happen to help their child be more successful. Talk to their building principal, talk to me or Dr. Lucas or any of us. And because all we want to try to do is help every one of our kids be as successful as possible.
So going back to a question that was brought up at public participation, well, maybe not brought up at public participation, but insinuated about accountability. It seems to me that everyone is held accountable here. From the teacher to the building principal, to the administrators, who are making sure that our teachers are prepared to deliver that.
I've been here 12 years, and I think that, I really do feel that we hold ourselves to a much higher standard than the state does. The state's measures are minimums, and we've always tried to hold ourselves to a higher standard. When you hold yourself to a higher standard, sometimes you don't reach it. But when you're really just trying to work as hard as you possibly can to make every kid be as successful as possible, so.
And if people have questions about accountability, they can always contact you. Or I see the principal, Glenn Oak, is back there.
McDonald shirt, did you just put a hand over his head? Teacher, I mean, down.
So we're not hiding any accountability issues here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again for your time.
I just have three comments to make. Number one, this was a great follow-up to your four-part presentation on the report card. That four-part presentation gave a lot of detail about how the report card is put together, et cetera. This was a great follow-up to, okay, what do you do? And I really appreciate the detailed level that you provided. Two statements came out of there that I wanted to react to. One of them was the follow-up what Stacy said about the level of sophistication and detail and all the levels of complexity that you deal with, with each individual. And as you just pointed out a moment ago, it's not a one-year plan. What I would hope that people would take away from this, people listening to this presentation here this evening, et cetera, is just how complex it is. And it is ongoing. This is not a situation where you start at 8 o'clock in the morning, then at 5 o'clock, you fold the folder up. Well, that was fun, but see, what else do I work on tomorrow? It goes on and on and on. So our expectation would be, of course, these presentations would continue. And then the last statement that was made, and I was really glad you pointed this out, that understanding the importance of the state law and being respectful of the state law, just like with the state learning standards, the academic standards, there is flexibility at the local level. The districts with curriculum development and these kind of programs have the right and the ability to do what is right for this district. And I'm really glad to hear you say that as well. So thanks, very good.
Good.
Good, thanks.
No, I agree, it's great, great material. Learned a lot between the four parts, and tonight's very, very good. All right, it is 8:56. We've now been going at it for about two and a half hours. I would suppose we take a brief break before Mr. Curran allows us. So it's 8:56, if we can get back at 9?
Yes.
I'm on the iPhone.
You on my own, my own network?
No.
I don't know the passcode. Oh, I'm yawning, I'm tired.
It was an anticipatory yawn.
Really?
Yeah, it's locked. We have to know the passcode, which I'm sure you'd give us for.
We can start now. It's 9:02, we're two minutes over a break, so let's get started. Next discussion item is funding strategies for the capital improvement plan. Mr. Curran is going to walk us through some materially prepared to help us deal with the funding strategy.
As you know, and I already talked about, and Dr. Lucas talked about, is you've seen a big-ticket item this evening. It was for the on-tangy rough, our partial replacements of $100,000. But it leads us into more of what's our strategy for the next couple of years? You know, this and positive beyond. So give the board kind of an update, kind of give some options out there, kind of give something to think about. Because at the end of the day, anything we have to do is we have to go back to the voters. Or anything, it's you as a board will have to make that decision. We'll give you options. We'll give you recommendations, but it's still up to you at the end of the day to make those decisions. So it's a nice discussion. Going to give an update on the May 2011 bond issue. Potential funding options after May 2011 bond issue is used up or spent. And recommendation that I would have currently at this time. May 2011, we passed a bond issue for $24.4 million. One thing I want to point out, $29.4 that has been issued. Remaining $15 million is still available to be issued. That authority lasts indefinitely, but it has not been issued. So no interest is being paid on any of that money. May 2011, you know, initial budget, what was intended for. The big-ticket item, of course, was elementary 16. $13.5 million was allocated to that. As you know, that has yet to break ground or anything discussion in our five-year forecast. We do not have any new buildings at this time. So that is on hold indefinitely. Another option, or another portion of the bond is $1.5 million in textbooks. That is something that was over previous bond issues. Textbooks were funded out of the bond issue. Currently, we're taking those out of the general fund. So that was a budget items back then. Transportation, which is primarily new buses. There was a bus schedule developed about, I believe, it was recently updated, I believe, in 2012, but about $2.5 million allocated for new buses. It's about typically nine to 10 buses a year that we're looking to purchase currently with the new.
And I think if I remember the plan, right, it's about $1 million a year in bus replacement.
Because you retire some and bring new ones on.
Yeah, for example, about 800,000, 900,000. Like next year, we have budgeted about 818,000. So capital improvements and maintenance, that is your roofs, that is your parking lots, that is.
Boilers.
Yes, chillers, you name it, it is. And then the last area is $3 million in technology. To date, we spent about $3.2 million of that, and we have about $5.35. So my math might be wrong in there, it might be off, a hundred thousand or so, but that's probably what it has right now. That has lasted, the budget is, it lasts through FY '15, so that would be projects, for example. Mr. Gordon's office will be handling for capital improvements, maintenance is through next summer. So what do we do beyond that? I'm going to go over four options and a recommendation. Bond residual interest. As you know, this district, we have since 1999, I believe I counted, 17 new school buildings have been built, among other bus garage compounds, and I believe an expansion of the one tangy high school within that time. If I'm missing anything, I apologize. So what we have done in the past is issued bonds. Bond levies have been the primary drivers of all that. You need the money quick, you need the money to build those buildings. We were fortunate, over time, to be able to build some interest up over interest earnings on those bonds as they're, you know, spent down over time. But still, you will earn interest on those back when you actually earned some interest. You know, our overnight accounts now are getting maybe what, 10 basis points now. So, and who knows when that will go back up. But that being said, back in, I believe, December of 2009, the Board approved to move $12 million into a permanent improvement fund to be later used at a later time. And it could be used, you know, it doesn't, there again, expire. It's an indefinite use, or time that it can be used. So bond residual interest. What's the advantages? Doesn't increase our debt service requirements of the district. We don't have to issue debt. As we then, as I mentioned, we have 17 buildings out there. We do unfortunately have quite a bit of debt. Julie mentioned the cup report out there previous, or I believe back from, you know, they haven't released, of course, FY '13, but I believe off the FY '12 cup report or 573rd, we promised approximately 610 school districts. So meaning Ohio School Facilities Commission is, they help build, state money to help build our buildings. All of ours are then built with local funds, local real estate taxes. Another advantage is, we have the funds currently available. They are here. We don't have to issue debt. We don't have to go back to the voters for new money. So they're available to meet those critical capital expenditures. Disadvantage is, it's a short-term solution. Our anticipation is we're last three to five years. Every year, we'll review our capital needs out there between capital improvements, technology, buses out there, and come up with those, prioritize those and those needs that we need out there, and try to stretch that as long as we can. But there again, it is a short-term solution. Second option, permanent improvement levy, which will be something new for this school district. Does not increase debt service requirements of the district. There again, we don't have to issue debt. Doesn't have to raise that millage of four to service debt. It's annual dedicated monies for capital improvements, which we, as you know, Mr. Gordon presented back in, I believe, December. You know, we have $90 million of capital needs over the next 20 years. That, you know, this would be dedicated monies that we could use to meet those capital needs that we have out there. Disadvantages, costly capital improvements have to be deferred due to lack of available funds. Meaning, depending on how big your permanent improvement levy, typically a bond issue, you're not building a building with this. You know, if you needed to do that, you're not going to be able to be able to save, you'd have to save up funds over several years to be able to do that. If you had, I guess, if we needed, you know, five, you know, we have three high schools, I guess we need three high school roofs. You know, that's not going to eat up your capital budget right away if it hadn't happened one year. I wouldn't think that would happen, but you know, that's the one disadvantages. You're limited to what you can raise. You're not raising a whole lot, you don't have a whole bunch of available money at one time. And the disadvantages affect on operating cost. Like I mentioned, you as a board have to make a decision. You know, like I said, we'll give you recommendations. What is, what do we, when we go back to the voters, if we want for a permanent improvement levy, you have to balance that out with the operating needs of the district too. And, you know, we want, only want to go back when we need to go back, but we only want to go back for what we need. And there's also the capacity of what we want to build levy on our taxpayers. So that would balance out against our operating needs. And so if we want to, that's a decision that you'd have to make, is, you know, how much do we want to put for permanent improvement levy? That then affects on the operating side. Do we go for a lower operating so we can have these permanent improvements? And it's that balance that sometimes, you know, you may not go for it less, and suggest a less operating levy so you can have a permanent improvement. There again, it's a priority type situation. Third option, issue remaining $15 million from the May 2011 bond issue. The authority to issue does not expire. I mentioned that authority goes on indefinitely. Disadvantages, it risks future availability of dollars for intended purpose. The intended purpose was primarily an elementary school. Like I said, in this five years, we don't have, in the next, or I say, the current five-year forecast, we don't have any buildings anticipated to be built. You know, mainly that, it's $13.5 million if it's budgeted now. It may be $15 million now. If it's indefinite, if it's five, 10 years, I don't know. I don't know where construction costs will go. But that, you know, that's what is our intended purpose was. When you went to the voters, the idea was we're going to have elementary 16 so that you're risking that future. 16, so that you're risking that future by using those dollars now. It does increase our debt service requirements. You have to pay the principal and interest on it, that's an issue. And there again, it's a short-term solution. And option four, we can go back to the old standby of a bond levy. There again, we have a lot of, you can, whatever re, whatever amount the bond levy is for, we can issue that debt and have, if it's, like I said, for example, a school building needs to be built, a whole bunch of roofs one year, we do have that money available in large amounts. Disadvantages is increased debt service requirements of the district. There again, is a short-term solution. And, you know, one thing on here that I didn't mention, because, you know, we haven't issued the 15 million yet. Let's say we did issue the 15 million, or you went through bond levy, the next bond levy, the no new millage concept is pretty much warrants itself out. Unless we get a huge influx of property value, growth of property valuation, I don't think we'll be able to do no new millage going forward. So, that's what you risk if you do a new bond issue, along with the $15 million. So, that's something. My recommendation would be to use the bond residual interest that we have. It's available resources that we have currently on hand that we set aside for permanent improvements before we go back to voters for new money. Like I mentioned before, we'll annually review and prioritize those capital needs, to stretch those available dollars. It's going to be needs, there's not wants in this situation, there's needs. Future, as of right now, like I mentioned, we don't have for the third and probably the fourth, how many times I've mentioned, we have no new buildings planned. We have to start looking at those 20 years, 20 years and the $90 million of capital improvements that's been identified. We need a way, we need that dedicated source to fund those needs that we have out there. So, I would recommend a permanent improvement levy in the three to five-year range here, to be able to meet those needs going forward after we use these bond residual interests.
Good. Good presentation. So, summary action site. As an individual board member, I would agree with your recommendation, in that the strategy should be to deplete down that bond, the bond residual interest money, which is in the PI fund right now. Make that last as long as we can, which does marry up with your second bullet there about, we've got a set of capital needs that have been identified for the next 20 years, but those need to be continually reexamined in terms of the sequence of events and the amount we can do every year. Because I think right now, the average is about $4 million a year, and I think that may be a little high. And I think we've got to think through with the finance and I committee, the facilities committee, what is that right annual amount that we should be, you know, how much capital should we be plowing back into maintenance and upgrades of that nature. And then, once we kind of, lack of word, burn through that residual interest money, then we will need a more permanent source of financing for those needs, because those needs aren't going away, and we can manage them and defer them as long as we can, but those repairs and those improvements will have to be made. So, I like the strategy. I think it's responsible, it's balanced in terms of using the resources you have until you really have to go back to the taxpayer for more. Any other thoughts?
I think from the facilities committee's standpoint, there's been a lot of discussion on this from a, on the 20-year plan, and our buildings are getting older, and a lot of what's in there is based on how long something is expected to last. And so, I understand that, let's set a certain amount, but that's really going to fluctuate. There are certain things that we can certainly plan for, but, you know, this is based on a chiller's supposed to last this long. And so, I think we're going to have a lot of ebb and flow on when something actually comes due, but the whole conversation around those priorities is what needs to continue to happen. And so, an understanding of what are the needs from an asphalt perspective, what are the needs, and what can we do in the meantime of, you know, shutting off one of the, from an energy savings standpoint, to kind of balance those, those needs at the building level. And we are touring buildings, and that committee is asking and challenging the, and the really great questions around what's really necessary. So, I really see great input coming from that facilities committee on helping Jeff shape and frame those requests and those needs. But they're going to come. We're not building anymore, but the maintenance is astounding how well they've managed to upkeep the buildings, but they're just general equipment and things that need to be replaced, so.
And there's, I forgot to make one comment on option three, again, speaking personally, I would be uncomfortable using that authorized, authorized bond issue for anything other than elementary 16.
Right.
I think we explicitly went to the voters, that money was for that building, to use it for something else, I certainly wouldn't be comfortable doing, nor would I recommend this board move forward doing. So, if we were to go that path, it would be an explicit requirement.
You're talking with bond counsel, too.
Well, permissible, yeah.
It's consistent with the legal, as when you guys voted to put it on, it might be consistent with whatever you say you're going to use it for at that point. But his, you know, kind of small quote was, "Be nice to Brooklyn," was included with it. So, that there, that's me to your elementary six.
But it meets the, say, the definition of a capital improvement, but I think the heart of the matter would be, we said one thing, and we should stick that, we're going to do something else. We should go back to the voters and ask them specifically for that other ask.
The other thing is, some people might say, "Well, why aren't you just pulling $4 million out of your, your operating budget?" Well, when you're adding 600 to 700 students a year, you're not getting any increase from the state. And when you figure that your average house probably brings in, oh, I think it's like $4,800 a year in school taxes, but that one house might have two kids in it, and we spend $8,600 a year to educate that one kid, so multiply that by two, you're not going to bring in, with four, or with 600 additional kids, you're not going to bring in the additional tax dollars to offset that. So, by pulling $4 million out of your operating budget each year, you're taking money out of the classroom, is what, what you're doing. Because we can't keep up with growth as it is, and we're not getting any additional funds from the state, we're not being funded at the level we should be funded at. So, to say that we're going to pay for roofs and boilers and asphalt repair out of the operating budget, I don't think that is a wise decision either, because then you're taking the money away that should be spent on the students in the classroom. I understand we've got to keep the buildings up, but we also have to keep them educated.
And, you know, it's not uncommon in the private sector, you have an operating budget, you have a capex budget, right? So, you need to understand what it takes to run what you're running, and you also need to understand in terms of transparency and good financial discipline, what kind of capital are you plowing back into that organization?
Right.
So, having a capex budget separate from your operating budget, I think is good financial discipline.
Did you want to say anything about the options? You know, give them, thank you.
I, I think I, I go along with Kevin's idea there.
First of all, thank you for the options. As we had a conversation a long time ago when it first came on, I reiterated just how important it was when we were leading up to the May 11 requests of the voters. It was so valuable to have the options and the advantages and disadvantages at that time, five options. So, thank you for doing this. And I very much agree, too, that this is probably the best way to go. Certainly the first half, use a residual, bring that down, maybe there needs to be a little contingency still remaining, I don't know. But with that thought, and the permanent improvement makes the most sense to me, it's the most flexibility, especially given the number of buildings. It's not like we have one building. It's their big, it's big need, big use, big cost, that gives us the most flexibility. So, I'm very much in favor of that, too. Is Jeff, is Jeff still here?
Yeah.
And I had suggested some time ago, long before we even started thinking about renaming, reorganizing our board committees, and I know I talked to Mr. All about it as well, given this need, I just think it would be extremely important to have on that committee, knowing that there's great people in that committee with great experience, that you get at least two facility management-type people who really know from their own experience working with large companies, with big facilities, single buildings, multiple buildings, that you get those people knowing, know about life expectancy of systems, and know what costs are, and how to prioritize, and how the dominoes can fall. So, I would still like to see, and maybe that's happened, I'm just not aware of, a couple of people who have that working knowledge.
You've added several, none of them fit that criteria. Is he doing what?
Well, that's, that's just how I first...
If you know of any, yeah.
Well, I gave, I gave the suggestion somebody that could be called, who said he would be happy to have a discussion. So, I just would like to reiterate that opinion.
Anything else from Mr. Kern?
Oh, no, but you did bring up, you know, the district's debt, and I just want to reiterate, the debt is there because we had to build facilities to house this influx of students. We've been the fastest-growing district. I mean, I'm sick of saying this, but I started on the redistricting committee in 1997. We've continued to be the fastest-growing school district in the state. It wasn't like we could house them at Walmart. You know, the buildings needed to be built, and the majority of those bond issues were issued with no additional millage. So, and that's, we were able to do, that's, I guess, if anything positive came out of the growth, it was that, that you were able to fund the buildings with no additional millage.
Good. Good. Any other questions, Kern? Thank you, great job.
No clapping?
Treasure is in favor.
He's set a very high bar, I'm sorry. Very high bar.
Agenda item 11, public participation session number two regarding action items. Do we have any? Do we have none? Okay, then let's move right to treasure actions. Do you want to present treasure action items, please?
Yes, on treasure action items, like I mentioned, the treasurer's report earlier, we have three of them, A, B, and C, the approved amendment, random agreement for deposit of public funds at PNC Bank, approved amended FY14 appropriations at the fund level, and two of those donations to the district.
King, can I have a motion to approve treasure action items A through C?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, treasure action is passed 4-0. Dr. Lucas, do you want to present superintendent action items?
Present superintendent action items A through F for approval, please.
Do we have any we'd like to pull out and vote on separately?
I don't believe so. What was your...
Oh, I'm sorry, we took C out of the present.
Yes.
Not C out of the action items, I'm sorry.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, that was just a hearing.
Yeah.
Make it sure. I'll entertain a motion to approve superintendent actions A through F.
So moved.
Second, please, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, so the superintendent action is passed 4-0. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
But it's only 9:30.
At 9:26.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
The next meeting will be at the Delaware Area Career Center.
April 10th.
South campus.
South campus, which is one on 23.
23, okay.
You both point in different directions. You both point in different directions, I'm concerned. I'll look it up on Google, I won't count on you. Directly across from Columbus State, just up from Peach Grove.
I, I do want to say before we leave, how much I appreciated the choir coming today. And we can joke about how long we're here and about how much we have to do, but I would honestly entertain having all of our meetings start with music, because of both the energy from a, from a district perspective, but to really get an opportunity to see not only the students, but the joy on the parents' faces as they're here presenting. So, while it is 9:30, and I've been at work since 7:00 this morning, I would, I would love music, and I appreciate them taking the time coming out and entertaining us.
Just to make sure students are not hitting their heads.
Oh, my gosh. Next time, can we set that thing up at an angle without the, let's get the, so we should adjourn, sorry.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King, yes?
Yes, meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thanks for everybody coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm on the iPhone.
You on my own, my own network?
No.
They have Wi-Fi.
I don't know the password.
I see yawns out there.
Not good at all.
Oh, I'm yawning, I'm tired.
It was an anticipatory yawn.
Really?
Yeah, it's locked. We have to know the passcode, which I'm sure you'd give us for...
So, we can start.
All right, let's go.
It's 9:02, we're two minutes over our break, so let's get started. Next up, next discussion item is I think funding strategies for the capital improvement plan. Mr. Kern is going to walk us through, so materially prepared to help us deal with the funding strategy. Just go ahead.
As you know, and I already talked about, and Dr. Lucas talked about, is you've seen a big-ticket item this evening, it was for the Al Tangee roof, our partial replacements of $1 million. But it leads us into more of what's our strategy for the next couple of years, you know, this and positive beyond. So, I'll give the board kind of an update, kind of give some options out there, kind of give something to think about, because at the end of the day, anything we have to do is we have to go back to the voters, or anything, it's you as a board will have to make that decision. We'll give you options, we'll give you recommendations, but it's still up to you at the end of the day to make those decisions. So, it's nice discussions, going to give an update on the May 2011 bond issue, potential funding options after May 2011 bond issue is used up or spent, and recommendation that I would have currently at this time. May 2011, we passed a bond issue for $24.4 million. One thing I want to point out, $0.94 that has been issued, remaining $15 million is still available to be issued, that authority lasts indefinitely, but has not been issued, so no interest is being paid on any of that money. May 2011, you know, initial budget, what was intended for, the big-ticket item, of course, was elementary 16, $13.5 million was allocated to that. As you know, that has yet to break ground or anything discussion in our five-year forecast, we do not have any new buildings at this time. So, that is on hold indefinitely. Another option, or another portion of the bond is $1.5 million in tax books. That is something that was over previous bond issues, tax books were funded out of the bond issue. Currently, we're taking those out of the general fund. So, that was a budget items back then. Transportation, which is primarily new buses, there was a bus schedule developed about, I believe, it was recently updated, I believe, in 2012, but about $2.5 million allocated for new buses. It's about typically nine to 10 buses a year that we're looking to purchase currently with the new...
And I think if I remember the plan, right, it's about $1 million a year in bus replacements?
Because you retire some and bring new ones on.
Yeah, for example, about $800,000, $900,000. Like, next year, we have budgeted about $818,000. So, capital improvements and maintenance, that is your roofs, that is your parking lots, that is...
Boilers.
Yes, chillers, you name it, it is. And then the last area is $3 million in technology. To date, we spent about $3.2 million of that, and we have about $5.35. So, my math might be wrong, and there might be off, a hundred thousand or so, but that's probably what we're asking. That has lasted, the budget is, it lasts through FY15, so that would be projects, for example. Mr. Gordon's office will be handling for capital improvements, maintenance is through next summer. So, what do we do beyond that? I'm going to go over four options and a recommendation. Bond residual interest. As you know, this district, we have since 1999, I believe I counted, 17 new school buildings have been built, among other bus garage compounds, and I believe an expansion to Al Tangee High School within that time. If I'm missing anything, I apologize. But, so, what we have done in the past is issued bonds. Bond levies have been the primary drivers of all that. You need the money quick, you need the money to build those buildings. We were fortunate, over time, to be able to build some... We were fortunate, over time, to be able to build some interest up over interest earnings on those bonds, as they're, you know, spent down over time, but still able to earn interest on those back when you actually earned some interest. You know, our overnight accounts now are getting maybe about 10 basis points now, so, and who knows when that will go back up. But, that being said, back in, I believe, December of 2009, the board approved to move $12 million into a permanent improvement fund, to be later used at a later time, and it can be used, you know, it doesn't, there again, expire, it's an indefinite use, or time that it can be used. So bond residual interest, what's the advantages? Doesn't increase our debt service requirements of the district. We don't have to issue debt, as we've been, as I mentioned, we have 17 buildings out there. We do unfortunately have quite a bit of debt, Julie mentioned the cup report out there previously. I believe back from, you know, I haven't released, of course, FY13, but I believe off an FY12 cup report, we're 573rd out of the promise, approximately 610 school districts. So, meaning on a high school facilities commission is, they help build, save money, help build our buildings. All of ours again, built with local funds, local real estate taxes. Bond residual, another advantage is, we have the funds currently available, they are here. We don't have to issue debt, we don't have to go back to the voters for new money, so they're available to meet those critical capital expenditures. Disadvantage is, it's a short-term solution. You know, our anticipation is we're, last three to five years, every year we'll review our capital needs out there between capital improvements, technology, buses out there, and come up with those, prioritize those, and those needs that we need out there, and try to stretch that as long as we can. But there again, it is a short-term solution. Second option, permanent improvement levy, which would be something new for this school district. Does not increase debt service requirements of the district. There again, we don't have to issue debt, doesn't have to raise that millage of four to service debt. It's annual dedicated monies for capital improvements, which we, as you know, Mr. Gordon presented back in, I believe, December. You know, we have $90 million of capital needs over the next 20 years, that, you know, this would be dedicated monies that we could use to meet those capital needs that we have out there. Disadvantage is, costly capital improvements have to be deferred due to lack of available funds, meaning, depending on how big your permanent improvement levy, typically a bond issue, you're not building a building with this. You know, if you needed to do that, you're not going to have, to be able to save, you'd have to save up funds over several years to be able to do that. If we had, I guess, if we needed, you know, five, you know, we have three high schools, I guess we need three high school roofs, you know, that's not going to eat up your capital budget right away if they haven't happened in one year. I wouldn't think that would happen, but, you know, that's the one disadvantage is, you're limited to what you can raise, you're not raising a whole lot, you don't have a whole bunch of available money at one time. And it does, disadvantages affect on operating money. So like I mentioned, you as a board have to make a decision, you know, like I said, we'll give you recommendations. What is, what do we, when we go back to the voters, if we want for a permanent improvement levy, you have to balance that out with the operating needs of the district too. And, you know, we only want to go back when we need to go back, but we only want to go back for what we need. And there's also the capacity of what we want to build levy on our taxpayers. So, that would balance out against our operating needs. And so if we went to, that's a decision that you'd have to make, is, you know, how much do we want to put for permanent improvement levy? That then affects on the operating side. Do we go for a lower operating so we can have these permanent improvements, and it's that balance that sometimes, you know, you may not go for unless, suggest a less operating levy so you can have a permanent improvement. There again, it's a priority type situation. Third option, issue remaining $15 million from the May 2011 bond issue. The authority to issue does not expire, I mentioned that authority goes on indefinitely. Disadvantage is, it risks future availability of dollars for intended purpose. The intended purpose was primarily an elementary school. Like I said, in this five years, we don't have, in the next, I say, the current five-year forecast, we don't have any buildings anticipated to be built. You know, mainly that, it's $13.5 million was budgeted now, it may be $15 million now. If it's indefinitely, if it's five, 10 years, I don't know, I don't know where construction costs will go. But that, you know, that's what is our intended purpose was, when you went to the voters, the idea was we're going to have elementary 16, so that you're risking that future by using those dollars now. It does increase our debt service requirements, you have to pay the principal interest on me, that's just an issue. And there again, it's a short-term solution. And option four, we can go back to the old standby of a bond levy. There again, we have a lot of, you can, whatever rate, whatever amount the bond levy's for, we can issue that debt and have, if there's, like I said, for example, a school building needs to be built, a whole bunch of roofs one year, we do have that money available in large amounts. Disadvantage is, is increased debt service requirements of the district. There again, is a short-term solution. And, you know, one thing on here too, I didn't mention, because, you know, we haven't issued the $15 million yet, let's say we did issue the $15 million, or you went through a bond levy, and that's bond levy, the no new millage concept, has pretty much worn itself out. Unless we get a huge influx of property value, growth of property valuation, I don't think we'll be able to do no new millage going forward. So, that's what you risk if you do a new bond issue along with the $15 million. So, at some point. My recommendation would be to use the bond residual interest that we have, it's available resources that we have currently on hand that were set aside for permanent improvements before we go back to voters for new money. Like I mentioned before, we'll annually review and prioritize those capital needs to stretch those available dollars. It's going to be needs, there's not wants in this situation, there's needs. Future, as of right now, like I mentioned, we don't have for the third and fourth, how many times I've mentioned, we have no new buildings planned. We have to start looking at those 20 years, 20 years and the $90 million of capital improvements that's been identified. We need a way, we need that dedicated source to fund those needs that we have out there. So, I would recommend a permanent improvement levy in the three to five-year range here to be able to meet those needs going forward after we use these bond residual interests.
Good. Good presentation. Some reactions site, as an individual board member, I would agree with your recommendation in that the strategy should be to deplete down that bond, the bond residual interest money, which is in the PI fund right now, make that last as long as we can, which does marry up with your second bullet there about, we've got a set of capital needs that have been identified for the next 20 years, but those need to be continually reexamined in terms of the sequence of events and the amount we can do every year. Because I think right now, it averages about $4 million a year, and I think that may be a little high, and I think we've got to think through with the finance and committee, the facilities committee, what is that right annual amount that we should be, you know, how much capital should we be plowing back into maintenance and upgrades of that nature? And then, once we kind of, lack of word, burn through that residual interest money, then we will need a more permanent source of financing for those needs, because those needs aren't going away, and we can manage them and defer them as long as we can, but those repairs and those improvements will have to be made. So, I like the strategy, I think it's responsible, it's balanced in terms of using the resources you have until you really have to go back to the taxpayer for more. Any other thoughts?
I think from the facilities committee's standpoint, there's been a lot of discussion on this from a, on the 20-year plan, and our buildings are getting older, and a lot of what's in there is based on how long something is expected to last. And so, I understand that, let's set a certain amount, but that's really going to fluctuate. There are certain things that we can certainly plan for, but, you know, this is based on a chiller's supposed to last this long. And so, I think we're going to have a lot of ebb and flow on when something actually comes due, but the whole conversation around those priorities is what needs to continue to happen. And so, an understanding of what are the needs from an asphalt perspective, what are the needs, and what can we do in the meantime of, you know, shutting off one of the, from an energy savings standpoint, to kind of balance those needs at the building level. And we are touring buildings, and that committee is asking and challenging the really great questions around what's really necessary. So I really see great input coming from that facilities committee on helping Jeff shave and frame those requests and those needs, but they're going to come. We're not building anymore, but the maintenance is astounding how well they've managed to upkeep the buildings, but they're just general equipment and things that need to be replaced.
And there's, I forgot to make one comment on option three, again, speaking personally, I would be uncomfortable using that authorized bond issue for anything other than elementary 16.
Right.
I think we explicitly went to the voters, that money was for that building, to use it for something else. I certainly wouldn't be comfortable doing, nor would I recommend this board move forward doing. So, if we were to go that path, it would be an explicit request.
You're talking with bond council too.
One permissible, yeah.
It's consistent with the legal, as when you guys voted to put it on, it levy, be consistent with whatever you say you're going to use it for at that point. But his, you know, kind of small quote was, be nice and working more, it was included with it, so that there, that's me to your elementary system.
But it meets the definition of a capital improvement, but I think the heart of the matter would be, we said one thing, and we should stick to that, we're going to do something else, we should go back to the voters and ask them specifically for that other ask.
The other thing is, some people might say, well, why aren't you just pulling $4 million out of your operating budget? Well, when you're adding 600 to 700 students a year, you're not getting any increase from the state. And when you figure that your average house probably brings in, oh, I think it's like $4,800 a year in school taxes, but that one house might have two kids in it, and we spend $8,600 a year to educate that one kid, so multiply that by two, you're not going to bring in, with four, with 600 additional kids, you're not going to bring in the additional tax dollars to offset that. So by pulling $4 million out of your operating budget each year, you're taking money out of the classroom, is what you're doing. Because we can't keep up with growth as it is, and we're not getting any additional funds from the state, we're not being funded at the level we should be funded at. So to say that we're going to pay for roofs and boilers and asphalt repair out of the operating budget, I don't think that is a wise decision either, because then you're taking the money away that should be spent on the students and the classroom. I understand we've got to keep the buildings up, but we also have to keep them educated.
And, you know, it's not uncommon in the private sector, you have an operating budget, you have a capex budget, right? So, you need to understand what it takes to run what you're running, and you also need to understand in terms of transparency and good financial discipline, what kind of capital are you plowing back into that organization?
Right.
So, having a capex budget separate from operating budget, I think is good financial discipline.
Did you want to say anything about the options? No, Kevin, thank you.
I think I, I go along with Kevin's idea there.
First of all, thank you for the options, as we had a conversation a long time ago when it first came on, I reiterate just how important it was when we were leading up to the May 11 request to the voters, it was so valuable to have the options and the advantages and disadvantages at that time, five options, so thank you for doing this. And I very much agree too, that this is probably the best way to go, certainly the first half, use a residual, bring that down, maybe there needs to be a little contingency still remaining, I don't know, but with that thought, and the permanent improvement makes the most sense to me, it has the most flexibility, especially given the number of buildings, it's not like we have one building. It's their big, it's big need, big use, big cost, that gives us the most flexibility. So I'm very much in favor of that too. And is Jeff, is Jeff still here?
Yeah.
And I had suggested some time ago, long before we even started thinking about renaming, reorganizing our board committees, and I know I talked to Mr. All about it as well, given this need, I just think it would be extremely important to have on that committee, knowing that there's great people in that committee with great experience, that you get at least two facility management-type people who really know from their own experience working with large companies with big facilities, single buildings, multiple buildings, that you get those people to know and know about life expectancy of systems, and know what costs are, and how to prioritize, and how the dominoes can fall. So I would still like to see, and maybe that's happened, I'm just not aware of it, a couple of people who have that working knowledge.
You've added several, none of them fit that criteria. Is he doing well?
Well, that's just how I first...
If you know of any. Yeah.
Well, I gave a suggestion to somebody that could be called who said he would be happy to have a discussion. So, I just would like to reiterate that opinion.
Anything else for Mr. Kern?
No, but you did bring up, you know, the district's debt, and I just want to reiterate, the debt is there because we had to build facilities to house this influx of students. We've been the fastest growing district, I mean, I'm sick of saying this, but I started on the redistricting committee in 1997, and we've continued to be the fastest growing school district in the state. It wasn't like we could house them at Walmart. You know, the buildings needed to be built, and the majority of those bond issues were issued with no additional millage. So, and that's, we were able to do, that's, I guess, if anything positive came out of the growth, it was that, that you were able to fund the buildings with no additional millage.
Good. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, great job.
No clapping? Cheshire's in favor.
He set a very high bar, I'm sorry. Very high bar.
Agenda item 11, public participation session number two regarding action items. Do we have any? Do we have none? Okay, then let's move right to treasure actions. Want to present treasure action items, please?
Yes, on treasure action items, like I mentioned in the treasurer's report earlier, we have three of them, A, B, and C, they have an approved amendment, random agreement for deposit of public funds at PNC Bank, approved amended FY14 appropriations at the fund level, and two books donations to the district.
King, can I have a motion to approve treasure actions, A through C?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, please call and roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, the treasure actions pass for zero. Dr. Lucas, do you want to present superintendent action items?
Present superintendent action items, A through F, for approval, please.
Do we have any who'd like to pull out and vote on separately?
I don't believe so. What was your...
Oh, I'm sorry, we took C out of the presentation.
Yes.
Not C out of the action items.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, that was just a hearing.
Okay, make it sure. I'll entertain a motion to approve superintendent actions, A through F.
So moved.
Second, please, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call and roll.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, so the superintendent actions pass for zero. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
But it's only 9:30.
At 9:26.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
The next meeting will be at the Delaware Area Career Center.
April 10th.
South campus.
South campus, which is one on 23.
23, okay.
You both point in different directions. You both point in different directions, I'm concerned. I'll look it up on Google, I won't count on you.
Directly across from Columbus State, just up from Peach Flow.
I do want to say before we leave, how much I appreciated the choir coming today. And we can joke about how long we're here and about how much we have to do, but I would honestly entertain having all of our meetings start with music because of both the energy from a district perspective, but to really get an opportunity to see not only the students, but the joy on the parents' faces as they're here presenting. So, while it is 9:30, and I've been at work since 7:00 this morning, I would love music and I appreciate them taking the time coming out and entertaining us.
Just to make sure students are not hitting their heads.
Oh my gosh, next time can we set that thing up at an angle?
Oh my gosh, next time can we set that thing up at an angle without the, let's get the, so we should adjourn, sorry.
Please call a roll.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thanks for everybody coming.
Thank you. I'm on the iPhone.
You on my own, my own network?
No.
I don't know the password. Oh, I'm yawning, I'm sorry.
It was an anticipatory yawn, really?
Yeah, it's locked, we have to know the passcode, which I'm sure you'd give us for.
So, we can start.
All right, let's go.
It's 9:02, we're two minutes over our break, so let's get started. Next up, next discussion item is, item B, funding strategies for the capital improvement plan. Mr. Curran is going to walk us through, so materially prepared to help us deal with the funding strategies.
As you know, as I already talked about, and Dr. Lucas talked about, is you've seen a big ticket item this evening, goes for the all tangy rough, our partial replacement of $1 million. This leads us into more of, what's our strategy for the next couple of years, you know, this and positive beyond. So give the board kind of an update, kind of give some options out there, kind of give something to think about, because at the end of the day, anything we have to do is we have to go back to the voters, or anything, it's you as a board will have to make that decision. We'll give you options, we'll give you recommendations, but it's still up to you at the end of the day to make those decisions. So, it's nice discussions, got to give an update of the May 2011 bond issue, potential funding options after May 2011 bond issue is used up or spent, and recommendation that I would have currently at this time. May 2011, we passed a bond issue for $24.4 million. One thing I want to point out, only 9.4 of that has been issued, the remaining $15 million is still available to be issued, that authority lasts indefinitely, but has not been issued, so no interest is being paid on any of that money. The May 2011, you know, initial budget, what was intended for, the big ticket item, of course, was elementary sixteen, $13.5 million was allocated to that. As you know, that has yet to break ground or anything discussion in our five-year forecast, we do not have any new buildings at this time. So that is on hold indefinitely. Another option, or another portion of the bond is $1.5 million in textbooks, that is something that was over previous bond issues, textbooks were funded out of the bond issue, currently we're taking those out of the general fund. So that was a budget items back then. Transportation, which is primarily new buses, there was a bus schedule developed about, I believe, it was recently updated, I believe in 2012, but about 2.5 million allocated for new buses, it's about typically nine to 10 buses a year that we're looking to purchase currently with the new.
And I think if I remember the plan right, it's about a million dollars a year.
Yeah, like.
Because you retire some and bring new ones on.
Yeah, for example, about 800,000, eight, 900,000, like next year we have budgeted about 818,000, so. Capital improvements and maintenance, that is your roofs, that is your parking lots, that is.
Boilers.
Yes, chillers, you name it, it is. And then the last area is $3 million in technology. To date, we spent about $3.2 million of that, and we have about 5, 5.3亿, so, my math might be wrong in there, might be off, 100,000 or so, but that's probably what we're asking. That has lasted, the budget is, it lasts through FY15, so that would be projects, for example, Mr. Gordon's office will be handling for capital improvements, maintenance is through next summer. So what do we do beyond that? I'm going to go over four options and a recommendation. Bond residual interest. As you know, this district, we have since 1999, I believe I counted, 17 new school buildings have been built, among other bus garage compounds, and I believe an expansion to Long Tangi High School within that time. If I'm missing anything, I apologize. So what we have done in the past is issued bonds, bond levies have been the primary drivers of all that, we need the money quick, we need the money to build those buildings. We were fortunate, over time, to be able to build some interest up over interest earnings on those bonds, as they're, you know, spent down over time, but still able to earn interest on those back when you actually earned some interest, you know, our overnight accounts now are getting maybe what, 10 basis points now, so, and who knows when that will go back up. But, that being said, back in, I believe, December of 2009, the board approved to move 12 million into a permanent improvement fund, to be later used at a later time, and it could be used, you know, it doesn't, there again, expire, it's an indefinite use, or time that it can be used. So bond residual interest, what's the advantages? Doesn't increase the debt service requirements of the district, we don't have to issue debt, as we've been, as I mentioned, we have 17 buildings out there, we do unfortunately have quite a bit of debt. Julie mentioned the cup report out there previously, I believe back from, you know, I, they haven't released, of course, FY13, but I believe off an FY12 cup report, we're 573rd, we promise approximately 610 school districts, so, meaning on a high school facilities commission is, they help build, save money, help build our buildings, all of ours again are built with local funds, local real estate taxes. Bond, another advantage is, we have the funds currently available, they are here, we don't have to issue debt, we don't have to go back to the voters for new money, so they're available to meet those critical capital expenditures. Disadvantage is, it's a short-term solution. You know, our anticipation is, we're last three to five years, every year we'll review our, our capital needs out there between capital improvements, technology, buses out there, and come up with those, prioritize those, and those needs that we need out there, and try to stretch that as, as long as we can, but there again, it is a short-term solution. Second option, permanent improvement levy, which would be something new for this school district, does not increase debt service requirements of the district, there again, we don't have to issue debt, doesn't have to raise that millage of four to service debt. It's annual dedicated monies for capital improvements, which we, as you know, Mr. Gordon presented back in, I believe, December, you know, we have $90 million of capital needs over the next 20 years, that, you know, this would be dedicated money that we could use to meet those capital needs that we have out there. Disadvantage is, costly capital improvements have to be deferred due to lack of available funds, meaning, depending on how big your permanent improvement levy, typically a bond issue, you're not building a building with this, you know, if you needed to do that, you're not going to be able to be able to save, you'd have to save up funds over several years to be able to do that. If we had, I guess, if we needed, you know, five, you know, we have three high schools, I guess we need three high school roofs, you know, that's not going to eat up your capital budget right away if you haven't had them one year. I wouldn't think that would happen, but, you know, that's, that's the one disadvantage is, you're limited to what you can raise, you're not raising a whole lot, you don't have a whole bunch of available money at one time. And this, and the disadvantage is affect on operating money, like I mentioned, you as a board have to make a decision, you know, like I said, we'll give you recommendations, what is, what do we, when we go back to the voters, if we want to for a permanent improvement levy, you have to balance that out with the operating needs of the district too. And, you know, we want to, all want to go back when we need to go back, but we only want to go back for what we need. And there's also the capacity of what we want to be able to levy on our taxpayers. So that would balance out against our operating needs, and so if we want to, that's a decision that you'd have to make, is, you know, how much do we want to put for permanent improvement levy? That, that affects on the operating side, if we go for a lower operating, so we can have these permanent improvements, and it's that balance, that sometimes, you know, you may not go for a less, suggest a less operating levy, so you can have a permanent improvement. There again, it's a priority type situation. Third option, issue the remaining $15 million from the May 2011 bond issue. The authority to issue does not expire, I mentioned that authority goes on indefinitely. Disadvantage is, it risks future availability of dollars for intended purpose, the intended purpose was primarily an elementary school. Like I said, in this five years, we don't have, in the next, I say, the current five-year forecast, we don't have any buildings anticipated to be built. You know, we may need that, it's $13.5 million was budgeted now, it may be $15 million now, if it's indefinitely, if it's five, 10 years, I don't know, I don't know where construction costs will go. But that, you know, that's what is our intended purpose was, when you went to the voters, the idea was we're going to have elementary sixteen, so that you're risking that future by using those dollars now. It does increase our debt service requirements, you have to pay the principal interest on me, that's an issue, and there again, it's a short-term solution. And option four, we can go back to the old standby of the bond levy. There again, we have a lot of, you can, wherever, whatever amount the bond levy is for, we could issue that debt and have, if there's, like I said, for example, a school building needs to be built, a whole bunch of roofs one year, we do have that money available in large amounts. Disadvantage is, is increased debt service requirements of the district, there again, is a short-term solution. And, you know, one thing on here too, I didn't mention, because, you know, we haven't issued the 15 million, let's say we did issue the 15 million, or you went through a bond levy, the next bond levy, the no new millage concept, is pretty much warrant, it warrants itself out. Unless we get a huge influx of property value, growth of property valuation, I don't think we'll be able to do no new millage going forward. So that's what you risk if you do a new bond issue, along with the 15 million dollars, so, that's something. My recommendation would be to use the, the bond residual interest that we have, it's available resources that we have currently on hand that were set aside for permanent improvements before we go back to voters for new money. Like I mentioned before, we'll annually review and prioritize those capital needs to stretch those available dollars. It's going to be needs, there's not wants, and it's a tradition, there's needs. Future, as of right now, like I mentioned, we don't have, for the third and probably fourth, I don't know how many times I've mentioned, we have no new buildings planned, we have to start looking at those 20 years, 20 years and the $90 million of capital improvements that has been identified, we need a way, we need that dedicated source to fund those needs that we have out there. So I would recommend a permanent improvement levy in the three to five-year range here, to be able to meet those needs going forward after we use these bond residual interests.
Good, good presentation. Some reactive site, as an individual board member, I would agree with your recommendation in that the strategy should be to deplete down that bond, the bond residual interest money, which is in the PI fund right now, make that last as long as we can, which does marry up with your second bullet there about, we've, we've got a set of capital needs that have been identified for the next 20 years, but those need to be continually reexamined in terms of the sequence of events and the amount we can do every year, because I think right now it averages about $4 million a year, and I think that may be a little high, and I think we've got to think through with the finance and I committee, the facilities committee, what is that right annual amount that we should be, you know, how much capital should we be plowing back into maintenance and upgrades of that nature? And then, once we kind of, lack of word, burn through that residual interest money, then we will need a more permanent source of financing for those needs, because those needs aren't going away, and we can manage them and defer them as long as we can, but those repairs and those, those improvements will have to be made. So I like the strategy, I think it's responsible, it's balanced in terms of using the resources you have until you really have to go back to the taxpayer for more. Any other thoughts?
I think from the facilities committee's standpoint, there's been a lot of discussion on this from a, on the 20-year plan, and our buildings are getting older, and a lot of what's in there is based on how long something is expected to last, and so, I understand that let's set a certain amount, but that's really going to fluctuate. There are certain things that we can certainly plan for, but, you know, this is based on a chiller's supposed to last this long, and so, I think we're going to have a lot of ebb and flow on when something actually comes due, but the whole conversation around those priorities is what needs to continue to happen. And so, an understanding of what are the needs from an asphalt perspective, what are the needs, and what can we do in the meantime of, you know, shutting off one of the, from an energy savings standpoint, to kind of balance those, those needs at the building level, and we are touring buildings, and that committee is asking and challenging the, the really great questions around what's really necessary. So I really see great input coming from that facilities committee on helping Jeff shape and frame those requests and those needs, but they're going to come, we're not building anymore, but the maintenance is, is astounding how well they've managed to upkeep the buildings, but they're just general equipment and things that need to be replaced, so.
And there's, I forgot to make it, one comment on option three, again, speaking personally, I would be uncomfortable using that authorized, authorized bond issue for anything other than elementary sixteen.
Right.
I think we explicitly went to the voters, that money was for that building, to use it for something else, I certainly wouldn't be comfortable doing, nor would I recommend this board move forward doing. So if we were to go that path, it would be an explicit request.
You're talking with bond counsel too.
Well permissible, yeah.
It's consistent with the legal, as when you guys voted to put it on, it let me be consistent with whatever you say you're going to use it for at that point, but his, you know, kind of small quote was, be nice and work and more was included. So that there, that's me to your elementary system.
But it meets to say the definition of a capital improvement, but I think the heart of the matter would be, we said one thing, and we should stick to that, we're going to do something else, we should go back to the voters and ask them specifically for that other ask.
The other thing is, some people might say, well, why aren't you just pulling $4 million out of your, your operating budget? Well, when you're adding six to 700 students a year, you're not getting any increase from the state, and when you figure that your average house probably brings in, oh, I think it's like $4,800 a year in school taxes, but that one house might have two kids in it, and we spend $8,600 a year to educate that one kid, so multiply that by two, you're not going to bring in with four, or with 600 additional kids, you're not going to bring in the additional tax dollars to offset that. So by pulling $4 million out of your operating budget each year, you're taking money out of the classroom, is what, what you're doing. Because we can't keep up with growth as it is, and we're not getting any additional funds from the state, we're not being funded at the level we should be funded at. So to say that we're going to pay for roofs and boilers and asphalt repair out of the operating budget, I don't think that is a wise decision either, because then you're taking the money away that should be spent on the students in the classroom. I understand we've got to keep the buildings up, but we also have to keep them educated.
And, you know, it's not uncommon in the private sector, you have an operating budget, you have a capex budget, right? So you need to understand what it takes to run what you're running, and you also need to understand in terms of transparency and good financial discipline, what kind of capital are you plowing back into that organization?
Right.
So having a capex budget separate from operating budget, I think is good financial discipline.
Did you want to say anything about the options? No, given, thank you.
I, I think I, I go along with Kevin's idea there.
First of all, thank you for the options, as we had a conversation a long time ago when it first came on, I reiterate just how important it was when we were leading up to the May 11 requests of the voters, it was so valuable to have the options and the advantages and disadvantages at that time, five options, so thank you for doing this. And I very much agree too, that this is probably the best way to go, certainly the first half, use a residual, bring that down, maybe there needs to be a little contingency still remaining, I don't know, but with that thought, and the permit improvement makes the most sense to me, has the most flexibility, especially given the number of buildings, it's not like we have one building. It's their big, it's big need, big use, big cost, that gives us the most flexibility, so I'm very much in favor of that too. And Jeff, is Jeff still here? And Jeff, is Jeff still here?
Yeah.
And I had suggested some time ago, long before we even started thinking about renaming, reorganizing our board committees, and I know I talked to Mr. All about it as well, given this need, I just think it would be extremely important to have on that committee, knowing that there's great people in that committee with great experience, that you get at least two facility management type people, who really know from their own experience working with large companies, with big facilities, single buildings, multiple buildings, that you get those people to know, know about life expectancy of systems, and know what costs are, and how to prioritize, and how the dominoes can fall. So I would still like to see, and maybe that's happened, I'm just not aware of it, a couple of people who have that working knowledge.
You've added several, none of them fit that criteria. Is it one or what?
Well, that's just how I personally think.
If you know of any.
Yeah.
Well, I gave a suggestion to somebody that could be called, who said he would be happy to have a discussion, so I'd just like to reiterate that opinion.
Anything else from Mr. Curran?
No, but you did bring up, you know, the district's debt, and I just want to reiterate, the debt is there because we had to build facilities to house this influx of students. We've been the fastest growing district, I mean, I'm sick of saying this, but I started on the redistricting committee in 1997, and we've continued to be the fastest growing school district in the state. It wasn't like we could house them at Walmart. You know, the buildings needed to be built, and the majority of those bond issues were issued with no additional millage. So, and that's, we were able to do, that's, I guess, if anything positive came out of the growth, it was that, that you were able to fund the buildings with no additional millage.
Good. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, great job.
The clapping. Cheshar's in favor.
He set a very high bar, I'm sorry. Very high bar.
Agenda item 11, public participation session number two regarding action items. Do we have any?
No.
We have none? Okay, then let's move right to treasure actions. Do you want to present treasure actions, please?
Yes, on treasure action items, like I mentioned in the treasurer's report earlier, we have three of them, A, B, and C, A being approved manor, random agreement for deposit of public funds at PNC Bank, approved amended FY14 appropriations at the fund level, and two books donations to the district.
Can I have a motion to approve treasure actions A through C?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, who's calling roll?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Yes, the treasure actions passed 4-0. Dr. Lucas, do you want to present superintendent action items?
Present superintendent action items A through F for approval, please.
Do we have any who'd like to pull out and vote on separately?
I don't believe so. What was your?
Oh, I'm sorry, we took C out of the presentation.
Yes.
Not C out of the action.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, that was just a hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, make it sure. I'll entertain a motion to approve superintendent actions A through F.
So moved.
Second, please, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call to roll.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, so the superintendent actions passed 4-0. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
But it's only 9:30.
At 9:26.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
The next meeting will be at the Delaware Area Career Center.
April 10th.
South Campus.
South Campus, which is one on 23.
23, okay.
You both point in different directions. You both point in different directions, I'm concerned. I'll look it up on Google, I won't count on you.
Diagonally across from Columbus State, just up from Peach Grove.
I do want to say before we leave, how much I appreciated the choir coming today. And we can joke about how long we're here and about how much we have to do, but I would honestly entertain having all of our meetings start with music, because of both the energy from a district perspective, but to really get an opportunity to see not only the students, but the joy on the parents' faces as they're here presenting. So, while it is 9:30, and I've been at work since 7:00 this morning, I would love music, and I appreciate them taking the time coming out and entertaining us.
Just to make sure students are not hitting their heads.
Oh my gosh, next time can we set that thing up at an angle without the, let's get the, so we should adjourn, sorry.
Please call to roll.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thanks for everybody coming.
Thank you.